Bienvenidos a este escenario sobre la propuesta de cita del Centro de Librería y Museos Presidenciales de Obama. Estas son las reuniones públicas hoy y mañana, convenidas por el Distrito de Parque Chicago, para permitir que se hable público sobre la propuesta de biblioteca, museo y centro presidencial, en orden de informar una posible decisión futura. Estamos aquí para escuchar lo que sabemos que es una gama de opiniones sobre esta propuesta. Esta sala está repleta de capacidad. Hay otra sala que está equipada con video y sonido, pero lo que me preguntaría es que después de que hable, que por favor salgan de la sala para que alguien más pueda entrar. Necesitamos hacer un reemplazo uno a uno, para que las personas que están en la otra sala, que están buscando la oportunidad de hablar, sean permitidas para entrar. Hemos programado tres horas para este escenario esta noche. Habrá una segunda reunión mañana a las 20:00. Tienen la oportunidad de volver si no tuvieron la oportunidad de expresar su opinión esta noche. Y también tomaré testimonio escrito. Quiero ser claro sobre los objetivos de este escenario y las circunstancias mientras avanzamos en este foro. El presidente de la Junta de Presidentes de Parque, Brian Tralbert, se ha recusado de involucrarse en esta cuestión, y yo soy la persona de la Junta de Presidentes. La reunión que se lleva a cabo esta noche y mañana, ninguna de estas reuniones son reuniones oficiales de la Junta de Parque del Distrito. No hay un quórum de la Junta, no se hará ninguna acción por parte de la Junta. No estamos aquí para tomar una decisión. Es posible que la Junta sea obligada a considerar la conveyencia de tierra en algún momento futuro. Estamos aquí para escuchar el diálogo público sobre eso. Eso no es lo que harán esta noche en términos de tomar una decisión. Estamos al principio de un proceso público, un proceso público que espero que sea largo, que comenzará con la pregunta de si queremos ver el Centro de Librería y Museos Presidenciales de Obama en Chicago. A eso me gustaría que la mayoría de la gente aquí respondiera sí. La ubicación del Centro de Librería, el diseño de la biblioteca, cómo funcionaría y lo que haría para la ciudad, estos son todos temas aún a abordar. Algunas de estas preguntas críticas no son las que podemos abordar porque las decisiones no serán tomadas finalmente por nosotros aquí en Chicago. Hay otros temas que podemos influenciar y que vamos a hacer para asegurar que el interés de los chicos de Chicago en las comunidades afectadas y la ciudad en general sean protegidas y mejoradas si se selecciona un sitio de Chicago. Lo más importante, quiero recordar a todos que hay tres sitios potenciales en Chicago para este Centro de Librería Presidencial de Obama. Ahora que la ciudad de Chicago ha descartado un cuarto sitio. Los tres sitios fueron seleccionados por la Fundación Presidencial Obama entre dos docenas de sitios inicialmente propuestas en Chicago. Nuestro objetivo es hacer todo lo que podemos para asegurar que nosotros en Chicago traigamos la biblioteca presidencial de Obama de vuelta a su ciudad natal. No podemos presumir qué sitio la Fundación Obama y el presidente y la primera damasina finalizarán, pero queremos hacer todo lo que podemos para ayudar a inclinar esa decisión en favor de Chicago al final del día. Estamos buscando la input pública. Estamos aquí buscando la input pública sobre la posibilidad de citar el sitio de Obama en cualquiera de los dos parcelas de tierra propiedad del Distrito de Parque Chicago. Uno de los sitios propuestos está en el perímetro de Washington Park, el otro en Jackson Park. La Fundación Obama ha claramente declarado su preferencia de que los dos sitios del lado sur favorecen ser tierra bajo el control de la ciudad de Chicago. La input pública aquí hoy nos da, como el Distrito de Parque, el conveniente de esta reunión, una perspectiva de cómo los sitios propuestos serían recibidos por sus vecinos y por la ciudad en general. Nuestro rol como Distrito de Parque Chicago es asegurar que el terreno parqueado sea usado para la mejora de las comunidades que sirve. En la mayoría de los casos, eso representa espacio verde, pero no siempre. Hay múltiples precedentes en Chicago de instituciones culturales que existen en el terreno parqueado a beneficio de los chicos de Chicago y el mundo más allá. Nuestro objetivo es asegurar que si o, y repito, si o el sitio de Washington Park o de Jackson Park sea seleccionado por la Fundación Presidencial, que el interés de las comunidades circundantes sean protegidos y que el propio parque y la ciudad de Chicago sean mejorados por el uso de ese sitio, si, si llega a eso. Y finalmente, y lo más importante, que el Distrito de Parque retenga posesión de la tierra si en cualquier momento en el futuro la biblioteca Obama fuera decomisionada. Habrá una breve presentación de los arquitectos de Skidmore, Owens y Merrill, hasta más claramente definidas las parcelas de tierra propuestas para uso, y después de eso abriremos la reunión para testimonios de partes interesadas. Reitero, aunque estamos aquí para discutir solo dos de los tres sitios potenciales que podrían cubrir el terreno del Distrito de Parque. No para promover otros sitios que ustedes sientan que deberían ser considerados. Ese barco ha navegado. Solo tres sitios potenciales de Chicago permanecen. Todos los demás fueron descartados por la Fundación Obama. La decisión sobre la cita no será determinada por el Distrito de Parque Chicago o por la ciudad de Chicago. La decisión de cita restará con el presidente y la primera damasina y la Fundación Obama. Solicito, respetablemente solicito, que cada orador pueda limitar sus comentarios a dos minutos, a menos, por supuesto, que se le pida que clarifique un punto de preocupación. También pediría que grupos y organizaciones representadas por múltiples miembros lleguen a la micrófono como grupo, pero elegan a un miembro para hablar durante el periodo de comentarios de dos minutos para que podamos escuchar una gama de opiniones. Sugerimos esto como una forma de escuchar muchas opiniones diferentes. Como presidenta, reservo el derecho de solicitar esta amplia gama de opiniones, y si grupos no elegen no adherirse a esa recomendación, me puede molestar. También reservo el derecho de asegurar que nuestra discusión aquí es germana al tema en hand, y no a otros temas. Hay muchos otros temas que veo que la gente está aquí para discutir, pero esos temas no son germanos a la cuestión de si la biblioteca Obama sería en cualquiera de estas dos parcelas de tierra. Así que en este punto, me gustaría recomendar a mi compañero comisionado, o reconocer a mi compañero comisionado Tim King, quien ha estado con nosotros. Y me gustaría abrir la presentación de la Universidad de Chicago. Disculpen, les pediremos que respeten el uno al otro y respeten el proceso.
Gracias, presidenta. Buenas noches a todos. Soy Derek Douglas, vicepresidente de la participación civica en la Universidad de Chicago. Y a cargo de la universidad y los muchos socios de la comunidad con las que hemos colaborado a través de este proceso, quiero agradecer al Distrito de Parque Chicago y la ciudad de Chicago por esta oportunidad de compartir información importante sobre el esfuerzo para llevar el Centro de Librería Presidencial Barack Obama al lado sur de Chicago. Este centro presidencial representa una oportunidad única y histórica para nuestra ciudad, en particular para el lado sur, el lugar que el presidente y la primera damasina llaman hogar. Este será la primera biblioteca presidencial verdaderamente urbana, lo que significa que tendrá un impacto mayor en el desarrollo económico, cultura y educación que cualquier centro presidencial anterior. También afectará a muchas más personas, especialmente los residentes locales en las comunidades. Queremos estos beneficios económicos, culturales y educativos para Chicago y para el lado sur. Nuestra juventud en particular se inspirará en esta biblioteca, que dará tributo a un presidente que vivió, trabajó y comenzó su carrera política en las mismas comunidades donde vivieron, jugaron y iban a la escuela. Durante el año pasado hemos estado trabajando para asegurar que el esfuerzo del lado sur es colaborativo que refleja la input de la comunidad local en la ciudad. Hemos hablado con cientos de individuos y grupos en más de 150 reuniones, así como con nuestros electores locales y representantes de la ciudad y de la Fundación Barack Obama. La retroalimentación que recibimos de la comunidad ha sido enormemente importante en la formación de los sitios que propusimos para la Fundación. Miembros de la comunidad nos dijeron que el centro presidencial debería ir en un vecindario donde pueda traer el mayor beneficio económico. Eso nos llevó de la propiedad de la universidad en Hyde Park, que es donde está la gran parte de la tierra de la universidad. También escuchamos de la comunidad que era importante que los residentes actuales no se desplazaran por la biblioteca, sino que más bien beneficiarse de la biblioteca. Mientras hay lotes vacíos en Woodlong y Washington Park, no hay un parcelo de 20 a 30 acres de tierra contigua para alojar el campus del centro presidencial sin desplazar a la gente. Durante el curso del año pasado, nuestras conversaciones con la comunidad y la Fundación incluían la discusión de más de una docena de posibles ubicaciones para el centro presidencial. Sin embargo, mientras progresamos a través del proceso, la Fundación ha expresado el mayor interés en dos sitios particulares, uno en el vecindario de Washington Park, que incluye tierra propiedad de la universidad, y el otro en Woodlong. Ubicar el Centro de Librería Presidencial de Obama en Washington Park o Woodlong conduciría a grandes inversiones y crecimiento, proporcionando una creciente potencia económica al lado sur. El año pasado, comisionamos una empresa independiente para analizar el potencial impacto económico de la biblioteca. They found that the library would result in direct investments of about $600 million into the community, draw 800,000 annual visitors to the south side, create nearly 3,300 local construction jobs, create 1,900 new permanent local jobs through the library, the museum and the creation of new businesses, help to create at least 40 new stores, restaurants and a hotel in neighborhoods near the library, have an annual impact of $220 million a year, increase local earnings by $56 million a year, increase tax revenue for the city and Chicago public schools by $3 million a year. En un palabra, sería transformador. Además de estos beneficios económicos, el Centro de Librería Presidencial de Obama traería una nueva oferta cultural importante al lado sur. Sería una mejora de las organizaciones culturales locales y crear experiencias educativas para nuestros jóvenes. El centro presidencial se convertiría en una joya en el campus de la biblioteca del sur, que incluye el Museo de Ciencias y Industria, el Dusabo Museum of African-American History y otras instituciones culturales del lado sur. Como una nueva destino para niños en toda la ciudad y para visitantes de todo el mundo, el centro presidencial sacaría de y aumentaría el tráfico a estas instituciones fuertes, trayendo una potencia necesaria de crecimiento en el área. Hemos hablado con varias organizaciones civicas y de la comunidad, incluyendo museos, nonprofits y otras universidades, y han presentado una riqueza de ideas para potenciales colaboraciones programáticas con el centro presidencial. Estas ideas incluyen proporcionar nuevos programas para las escuelas locales en áreas como ciencia, tecnología, ingeniería y matemática, mejorar el trabajo de los nonprofits locales, servir a la juventud a través de tutoría gratuita, educación nutricional y recreación, e explorar formas de ofrecer nuevas oportunidades para una gama de residentes de la comunidad, como a través de agricultura urbana, entrenamiento de la fuerza laboral para la juventud y opciones para ex ofendientes. Estas y otras ideas apoyan las prioridades del presidente y la primera damasina en áreas críticas, incluyendo educación, salud y oportunidades económicas. Ahora me gustaría pedirle a Phil Anquist de Skidmore, Owens y Merrill que provea un poco más de detalle sobre los dos sitios propuestos.
Buenas noches. Gracias a todos por venir esta noche, y gracias a la Academia de Hyde Park por nos acomodar. Voy a tomar cinco minutos y mostraros nueve slides que mostrarán los sitios que se propone y por qué creemos que son tan importantes para este centro presidencial, las comunidades del lado sur, el sistema parqueal en su conjunto, la ciudad de Chicago y la nación. Como Derek señaló, estamos respondiendo a la solicitud de la Fundación Barack Obama de que presentemos nuestros sitios posibles mejores para el centro presidencial. Queremos hacer claro a la Fundación que elija Chicago, y específicamente el lado sur. Este slideshow que está ahora muestra los dos sitios en contexto con los vecindarios circundantes y los parques históricos Olmsted. Indica que este será el primer biblioteca presidencial urbana, comprometiendo directamente y creando oportunidades para las comunidades vecinas. Sabemos que el presidente y la primera damasina están profundamente interesados en la salud, en la educación, cultura, comida y la restauración del medio ambiente. Estos sitios pueden apoyar directamente los tipos de programas que podemos imaginar siendo desarrollados en el centro presidencial. Ubicar el Centro de Librería Presidencial de Obama en uno de estos grandes parques históricos puede proporcionar una oportunidad notable para una asociación notable. Esta slaja que ven ahora muestra el centro dentro de Jackson Park y Washington Park. Me señalaré estos dos para ustedes si no los pueden ver. El sitio de Washington Park está junto a la isla Stony, justo al sur de la Playas de Midway.
Es Jackson Park.
Jackson Park, perdón. Oh, Dios mío. Tal vez simplemente vaya a casa. ¿Y qué estaba diciendo? El mejor sitio? El sitio de Washington Park está aquí junto a King Drive en Garfield. Está bien. ¿Estoy bien? Está bien. Solo una nota, el sitio de Washington Park también incluye una parcela de tierra de la universidad y la ciudad propiedad de la tierra que está al sur de la calle King Drive. La Fundación también podría elegir construir una parte de esta tierra también, que está adyacente a la estación de la CTA Green Line en 55. Este es un diagrama de estos dos sitios. Jackson Park a la derecha, Washington Park a la izquierda. Ambos son alrededor de 20 acres, 20, 21, 22 acres. La flecha roja que estamos mostrando como un diagrama es realmente un ejemplo del huésped de construcción, que creemos que sería alrededor de tres acres, fuera de estos 20, 21 acres. Podríamos no necesitar, la Fundación podría no necesitar el completo 20 acres. No realmente sabemos en este punto. No sabemos el número de edificios, el diseño de los edificios, dónde estarán ubicados o exactamente cuánto espacio ocuparán, pero este diagrama fue para todos nuestros beneficios para entender la área construida versus el área de espacio abierto. Solo para darles un métrico, veamos cuatro bibliotecas presidenciales pasadas. Así que tenemos la Biblioteca Lyndon B. Johnson, a la izquierda, un sitio de 30 acres. La área de construcción es de cuatro acres. La Biblioteca Jimmy Carter y Museo, un sitio de 35 acres, huésped de construcción de 2.5 acres. La Biblioteca William Clinton y Museo, 38 acres, huésped de construcción de dos acres. Biblioteca George W. Bush, Museo, 23 acres, tres acres. Ahora, el Centro de Librería de Barack Obama puede ser muy diferente de esto, pero pensamos que sería útil mirar estos como métricos. Veamos algunos otros aspectos de estos sitios. Chicago es el centro del país, y estos sitios están en el centro de una red de transporte activa. Debido a esta ubicación urbana, expertos estiman que el centro presidencial verá alrededor de 800,000 visitantes al año. Llegar al centro presidencial por transito es crucial. El sitio de Washington Park, como mencioné, está adyacente a la estación de la CTA Green Line 55th Street, una adyacente crítica que hace que la feria sea muy accesible. El sitio de Jackson Park está adyacente a la línea eléctrica metro, la estación de la calle 59, 60 y la estación de la calle 63. Estos mejorones de la estación, que serían impulsados, también ayudarán a traer más gente a este sistema de parque Chicago. En adición, estos sitios son fáciles de acceder por carros a través de la Dan Ryan, Lake Shore Drive, Garfield Boulevard, Isla Stony y Martin Luther King Drive. Estos sitios están en una cruzada crítica en la ciudad y se vinculan muy bien a nuestros aeropuertos internacionales. Los visitantes proporcionarán crecimiento para los negocios locales, enlivan los corredores comerciales. El sitio de Washington Park, como todos saben, está en Garfield Boulevard y enlizará Garfield Boulevard. El sitio de Jackson Park enlizará Isla Stony y la calle 63. Estos dos sitios están ubicados entre un número de grandes instituciones educativas, incluyendo la Academia de Hyde Park. El centro presidencial colaboraría con estas escuelas y otras en la ciudad para expandir y enriquecer el programa educativo. Y finalmente, ambos sitios también complementarían un número creciente de organizaciones culturales en el lado sur. Esta slaja muestra las instituciones culturales que están ubicadas en o cerca de los sitios de Jackson Park y Washington Park. Y pueden ver que la biblioteca, o el centro presidencial, fortalecería este ribón cultural. Un campus de la biblioteca del lado sur está formando, y el centro presidencial sería un gran socio con esto. En resumen, hablando personalmente, hay un poder y una global importancia a estos dos sitios parques que hacen que sean el suelo apropiado para el que establecer el histórico único de la presidencia estadounidense que endurece. Amo estos t-shirts y sweatshirts que dicen "Vamos a traer esta biblioteca a casa", así que vamos a traerla a casa. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Como estamos en la puerta de Jackson Park y al lado de Washington Park, es apropiado que escuchemos ambos consejos. Así que me gustaría primero escuchar a Louise McCurry, que es la presidenta del consejo de consejos de parque Jackson Park. Louise, ¿estás disponible? Y mientras ella viene, Cecilia Butler, ¿también vendrías a la micrófono? Representando al consejo de consejos de Washington Park.
Buenas noches, por favor.
Está bien, amigos. ¿Cuántos de ustedes saben que Jackson Park es uno de los parques más increíbles de la tierra? Junten sus manos por Jackson Park. El consejo de consejos de parque Jackson Park ha traído más de 2,000 voluntarios a Jackson Park para hacerlo un lugar hermoso este año. Es un lugar perfecto para los niños. Para mí, siempre, siempre se trata de los niños. Así que si tenemos la biblioteca presidencial, obviamente en Jackson Park, los niños vendrán al parque. Los niños vendrán a la biblioteca. Uno que ha llevado a mis hijos a cuatro bibliotecas presidenciales en todo el país. Amo las bibliotecas presidenciales porque los niños ven las posibilidades para su vida en 20 años. Ves las luchas que llevan los jóvenes a llegar a su educación, a la universidad y a convertirse en presidente de Estados Unidos. Finalmente, Jackson Park es absolutamente el mejor entorno natural, pero tenemos jardines de comunidad, y tenemos playas gratuitas, y tenemos un mar maravilloso, el Museo de Ciencias y Industria, y tenemos los jardines japoneses. Tenemos todos estos lugares increíbles donde una familia podría venir visitando la biblioteca presidencial y pasar su día en Jackson Park. Durante muchos años, el lado sur de Chicago ha sido, como el resto de la ciudad, tenido la ilusión de que es un lugar peligroso para estar. Sabemos mejor. Sabemos que Jackson Park es el lugar más increíble para traer a tus hijos, a tus familias, a tus ancianos, a tus personas en silla de ruedas, porque Jackson Park gira. No digo que Washington Park no gire, pero Jackson Park gira. Es un lugar donde las familias pueden venir y hacer cosas maravillosas. Así que si la biblioteca viene a Jackson Park, seremos emocionados. Por supuesto, siempre nos gustaría usar menos terreno parqueado, pero estamos hardworking en tomar terreno que fue usado antes por el sitio de la missil Nike y por los antiguos parques de parking, y convertirlo en espacio verde para que nuestros hijos tengan más espacio, por supuesto, para jugar soccer y jugar fútbol, porque tenemos las mejores equipos de soccer y las mejores equipos de fútbol en la ciudad de Chicago en Jackson Park. Y es un lugar donde las personas mayores pueden venir y disfrutar de la paz y la tranquilidad de la observación de pájaros y mirar animales en el parque. Si te gusta jugar tenis, tenemos un montón de courts tenis. Todo está aquí.
Has superado tus dos minutos.
Jackson Park es un gran lugar para quedarse. Esperamos que vengan a nuestro parque. Si lo hacen, seremos muy emocionados. Gracias.
Gracias, Louise. Cecilia Butler, consejo de parque Washington Park.
¿Alguna vez ha tenido el Distrito de Parque tantas personas para venir a una audiencia?
No.
No, no creo que lo sea. Son todos amantes de parques, obviamente. No tengo que decirles sobre Washington Park. Solo vayan y vean. Pero tengo que decirles que debido a una comunidad entusiasmada entre "¿Deberíamos hacerlo?" No fue hasta que comenzaron a hablar, es decir, la Universidad de Chicago comenzó a hablar de terreno parqueado, que fue serio. Sí, serio. Ahora, lo más importante es que, sí, apoyamos la biblioteca presidencial en Washington Park, la comunidad y el parque, pero solo si nos dice eso. No queremos que alguien más tome la decisión por ellos, incluyendo al alcalde. Ni siquiera queremos pensar que alguien más tomó esa decisión, pero el presidente Obama y su familia. Ahora, ya que has traído terreno parqueado, sentimos que si el presidente dice que quiere Washington Park, tendremos que darlo a él. Pero esa tierra en el parque no puede ser dada a alguien más, a la ciudad de Chicago. Debe seguir con el Distrito de Parque, porque, adivinen qué, han hecho un trabajo excelente, especialmente desde 1986 cuando se demandaron por hacer un buen trabajo. Y por qué estamos aquí hoy como gente de consejo. No estoy aquí solo porque... Estoy aquí porque soy dedicada a mi parque. Así que la Fundación, el presidente Obama, los amamos, pero la idea...
Has superado tus dos minutos.
...que debe estar más allá y que debe darse a la ciudad de Chicago, no, no. Revisen eso. Manténgalo dentro del Distrito de Parques, porque somos el número uno en este país como Distrito de Parques.
Muchas gracias. Lo que me gustaría hacer es escuchar al público, que es lo que vinimos a hacer. ¿Quién tiene la lista de tarjetas de comentarios? ¿Podrías llamar los seis primeros nombres, por favor? Estoy pidiendo que la gente se reunió, respete el proceso, recuerden los dos minutos si quieren escuchar una amplia variedad de opiniones. Por favor, llame los nombres.
En este momento, ¿puedo pedirle a Dr. Brazier? Wallace Good. Dr. Carol Adams. Voy a Father Tony, M-A-Z-O-R, de Markhamo. Alderman Ferretti.
Déjanos empezar.
Buenas noches, madame presidenta. Mi nombre es Dr. Byron Brazier. Soy el pastor de la Iglesia Apostólica de Dios, pero también represento a varios interesados de la comunidad y organizaciones reconocidas en el Network of Woodlong y sus cuatro pilares.
Buenas noches.
Todos están bien sabiendo el impacto económico que una biblioteca puede tener, una biblioteca presidencial puede tener. En varias entrevistas que me han dado, es tan importante que reconozcamos que esta biblioteca es importante para la ciudad de Chicago. Pero como el presidente Obama es el primer presidente negro afroestadounidense, su biblioteca debe estar en una de nuestras comunidades. Una parte del desarrollo económico, aunque puede haber algo de oposición, dada los 1,000 acres entre Washington Park, la Playas de Midway y Jackson Park, 20 acres no parece ser mucho terreno para ser quitado. El tercer elemento, el tercer elemento es realmente sobre, no lo que queremos estar contra o lo que queremos protestar contra, sino lo que queremos construir. Han habido aquellos que...
Por favor, respete el proceso. Disculpen, por favor.
Han habido aquellos que creían que esto es un don de tierra de la universidad. Debo decir que he trabajado con la universidad durante los últimos años, y la universidad en sus intereses de tener la biblioteca presidencial aquí ha hecho un trabajo honesto de reunir a todos los interesados y ser una institución. Deben tener una institución que pueda competir con las otras instituciones, como Hawaii y Colombia. Y debemos reconocer que nosotros como comunidad tenemos una fuerza en nuestra comunidad que puede ser usada, y se llama la Universidad de Chicago. Finalmente, finalmente me gustaría decir esto una última cosa. Y eso es, es que este proyecto en particular, y recuerdo cuando todos querían los Olimpos, y hablaron de cuánto realmente los Olimpos traerían a la ciudad de Chicago. Cuando lo miras, este centro presidencial en realidad será mayor y traerá un mayor beneficio a la ciudad de Chicago que los Olimpos.
30 segundos restantes.
Madame presidenta, muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Madam guardián de tiempo, creo que sería fácil... Madam Timekeeper, I think it would be easy for people to be able to gauge their comments if you would give them time cues. So when they get to one minute, would you let them know that? When they get to 30 seconds, would you also let them know that? Thank you very much. Who's our second speaker, please?
Wallace Good?
Good evening. I'm Wallace Good, the Executive Director of the Hyde Park Chamber of Commerce. The Commerce was founded in 1939, and for 75 years, we have been committed to the development and enhancement of business and commercial entities on the South Side. In these 75 years, we've learned how businesses work and think. We are all about economic development, which means employment opportunities, flourishing businesses, and a vibrant fiscal community. The Obama Presidential Library is wonderfully, incredibly, outrageously supportive of each of these endeavors. The Obama Presidential Library will bring to the South Side much-needed economic growth, we all understand that, badly-needed employment, who could argue with that, and an incredible boost to our community with many new business opportunities. With these possibilities in mind, the Hyde Park Chamber of Commerce wants to go on record in full support of the Obama Presidential Library. Our 269 members want to be on board-
One minute remaining.
-full support of the Obama Presidential Library. That really throws you off. Coming to Chicago-
By design.
-coming to Chicago, and in particular, to the South Side. We encourage all stakeholders to come together. This shouldn't be a divisive argument. This should be one that allows us to decide what an incredible opportunity we have at this historic, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The Hyde Park Chamber says, "Bring it on home."
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Alderman, are you ready? Welcome to the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, quite frankly, we shouldn't be here today. We are all in favor of the library, and everyone wants to have the library here. The emotional fix was in for the library. This is a place where he began community organizing at 111th Cottage Grove. He became a state senator. He started a family here. He got married here. He became a U.S. Senator here. And really, and then in Grant Park, he gave his speeches, acceptance speech that night. We shouldn't be here. We shouldn't be dividing up our communities and saying whether or not we should be giving up park land. It's just wrong. That's what, and the University of Chicago can find better ways and a better source to create the library here. We have one strong bid already from the UIC, and we should make this a strong bid, too. Let the presidential family decide for us. But let's not, let's not cloud the issue for them where it's become destructive, and it has become destructive. This 11th hour, 59th minute of a conversation that is just, and it doesn't hold transparency, accountability, and what people value the most, input-
One minute remaining.
-of two meetings here. We should not be here today. We all want the library. We want to bring it home. When I saw that one picture of the posters on LaSalle Street that in November after the president was elected, it brought back a sense of pride about what our nation is and what we've done. But here, we've ended up dividing everybody. USC should not be using-
30 seconds remaining.
-our property for it. They should find a different way to make that bid accessible and make it a strong bid. But let's not use public land again, because that's what we're seeing happening all over. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
And we'll see you all tomorrow at the board meeting.
Dr. Adams?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity.
Excuse me, please.
Thank you so much.
Would you please sit down?
Thank you very much. Put in a card and get up here. My name is Carol Adams. I'm the immediate past president of the Dussable Museum and a founding member of Museum Campus South.
Dr. Adams, excuse me, one second. Sir, if you cannot respect the process, you won't be able to stay in here.
I'm glad we're all here, having an opportunity to voice our opinions about this and add this to the over 150 meetings that have already been held on this topic. I encourage the Park District, the city of Chicago, and all other stakeholder entities to see the educational, cultural, and economic development of these communities and the honoring of our homegrown president as paramount in citing the Obama Presidential Library on Chicago's legendary South Side. As a devotee of museums and the Eric Frederick Homestead, I'm glad we are not making any small plans. Historically, Chicago's major museums are located in parks, and the marriage has been a good one. I applaud the minimal displacement of residents and businesses and the park-positive aspects of the plan that is under consideration. I shudder to think how long we would have to wait for full-scale development without the library-
One minute remaining.
-and do not think it should be held hostage for any reason. This is a win-win-win that respects the authentic voice of the community to be self-determining. Let's bring it on home.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Could I ask that you call the next six people so that they can line up as testimony begins? So please call the next six people, and then we'll hear from Father.
Dr. Tony? Oh, all right. So you're up here. Mr. Arnold Randall? Shirley Newsom? Dr. Leon Finley?
Finney.
Finney, I'm sorry. David Mosina?
Mosina.
Mosina, one, two, three, four.
Old teachers never die.
And this name, I have to spell T-Y-R-E-U-S-I-T for rainbow push.
Father, please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Father Tony Mazurka, the servant president of Mount Carmel High School, and our entire Mount Carmel High School community is 100% in favor that the South Side of Chicago is a home for the Obama Presidential Center. Daily access to and ongoing partnerships with the Presidential Center would be a tremendous source of inspiration for our 700 young men who come from 119 zip codes and 250 grammar schools, as well as students from Hyde Park Academy, Kenwood Academy, and the University of Chicago Lab School. This past year, we enhanced our service programs at Mount Carmel by asking all of our young men to provide one week of service to the local community, including environmental projects in Washington Park and Jackson Park. And the Obama Presidential Center would offer additional inspiration, and we hope, additional opportunity for student service projects within the community. And finally, as Mount Carmel has been rooted in Woodlawn and has witnessed its development and its change over the past 115 years, we know the impact the Presidential Library would have on the local economy and the safety, especially for our young people. We want Craig Robinson, the First Lady's brother and a 1979 graduate of Mount Carmel High School, and our 15,000-
One minute remaining.
-among them, to return to Mount Carmel, to return to the Woodlawn area and experience the economic development and the safety we are sure that the Presidential Center would bring. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Randall?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Arnold Randall. I'm a lifelong resident of Woodlawn. I've lived here my whole life. My family came here in the 1950s, so I have deep roots. I've used Washington Park, the Midway Plaza, and Jackson Park my whole life. I've also had the privilege of managing these parks in previous jobs. I have, I think, a very interesting perspective on it. There are 11, as I understand it, 11 museums in the parks here in Chicago, and I want to address this issue of open space in museums. There are 11 museums, from the Field Museum to the Museum of Science and Industry, Dussable Museum of African-American History, Mexican Arts Museum, and there are any number of newer museums that are in the parks as well. So this is not an unusual thing to have in our park system. In fact, the world would say these are great assets for us, and I would say they're great assets for us. I think there should be a very, very high bar for what you put in the parks and how the parks are used. In my opinion, as a lifelong resident, as a person who has made open space in parks part of his professional life-
One minute remaining.
-I think this meets the bar. A presidential museum, if it were not Barack Obama, would meet the bar. But the fact that it is Barack Obama, the first African-American president in a park, whether it's Jackson or Washington Park, and parks are named for presidency of the United States seems more than appropriate to me. I think part of the challenge here is we don't exactly know what it's going to look like or where things are going to be. And I understand that creates some anxiety, and I have a lot of friends here on both sides of the issue.
30 seconds remaining.
But I want you to know that I think I have a lot of faith in the First Lady and the President on this issue. I have a lot of faith in the folks who are trying to put this together, and I think it would be a huge missed opportunity if we don't have the Presidential Library here on the South Side in the Washington Park community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Who is our next speaker?
Shirley Newsom.
My name is Terrell Scott, and I'd like to say I would like for the library to be here on the South Side and Washington Park. I'd like for it to be in rainbow push. I'd like to say that thank you for the rejection, and I thank you for our mayor and government, new government here. But I would like to say that I would love for the library to be here, the South Side of Chicago. I want to say God bless you and God thank you, and good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Ms. Newsom?
Madam Chairman and members of the Park District Board, for the record, my name is Shirley Newsom. I am a resident of North Kenwood, Oakland.
Tilt your microphone down just a little bit, please. Thank you.
And I have also served on the advisory board for the Obama Presidential Library. In 1893, Chicago hosted the World's Colombian Exposition on former marshland at the present location of Jackson Park. The exposition drew at that time 27.5 million visitors and is considered the most influential world fair in history. The University of Chicago was founded in 1892 on the same South Side location. The term midway for a fair or carnival referred originally to the Midway Plaza, a strip of park land-
One minute remaining.
-that still runs through the University of Chicago campus and connects Washington and Jackson Parks. A collaboration of institutions, organizations, and other entities have come together to unite as one, to develop what we are referring to as a cultural coast on the South Side, connecting the various museum campuses from the lakefront to Washington Park along the Midway. For that reason, my personal preference for the location of the Obama Presidential Library would be the Washington Park site.
30 seconds remaining.
That said, I am also in favor of Jackson Park site, as it, too, is located on the southeast side of Chicago. The Obamas have a connection to this part of the city, and it would be a shame not to be able to bring them home.
Thank you. Dr. Finney? But before Dr. Finney starts, would you call the next six testifiers, please?
Sure. Sel Dunlap? The last name is P-A-L-A-C-I-O. Benita Johnson Gabriel? The first name is George. I cannot, the last name, I'm going to try and spell B-L-A-
Blackmore.
Oh, George Blackmore.
I should know him.
We know him, Mr. Blackmore.
Manny Perez? Those are the next six.
Okay. Dr. Finney, thank you. Excuse me. Please respect the process.
My name is Leon Finney. I'm a citizen of the city of Chicago, state of Illinois, and United States of America. We are here today to express our right as citizens to urge an affirmative vote by the Park District and every other body to support the Obama Library for the city of Chicago. It's time to bring President Obama back to Chicago. It's time to say yes to the plan to build the Obama Library in Chicago. It's time to vote yes to the building of the Obama Library on the South Side of the city of Chicago. It's time to vote to invest $600 million in our neighborhoods now. It's time to vote yes to attracting 800,000 visitors every year. It's time to vote yes to those who will spend money in our neighborhoods. It's time to vote yes to the creation of 5,000 jobs for our people. It's time to create new businesses for our black women and our black men. It's time to say yes to rebuilding our neighborhood. It's time to say yes, Mr. President. We want you to bring it on home. We came to win it. We came to get this library for the city of Chicago, for the South Side of the city of Chicago, for Woodlawn, for Jackson Park, for Washington Park. Bring it on home! Vote yes!
Let me please clarify something. I need to clarify. Dr. Finney, I appreciate your passion, but let me clarify the fact that there is no issue before the Park District Board on which it is voting. We are not at a Park District Board meeting. We are at a public hearing. We expect, respect your opinion, and we appreciate it, but we are here to get all of the public input. At some point, we may be asked to vote, but it's not today. I just want to be clear. I just want to be clear.
Hi, I-
Excuse me. Please, respect our speaker.
Hi, I am C.M. Winters Palacio. I'm a college librarian. I am also a CPS parent and a proud citizen of the 21st Ward, and after now, I'm disappointed I got to follow Dr. Finney. But as a preacher's daughter, I'm certain I could be a great wing woman. I think it's important that the library is on the South Side. A lot of us young leaders have studied President Barack Obama. We have especially learned from his narrative about not waiting your turn, but being ready for the call. I think it's important that not only is it on the South Side, but that the library sends certain distinct messages that are unapologetic. For example, it's wonderful that the library, and it should be in Chicago, but there should be also an understanding that no public school should be without a library. In addition to that, I know we talk about economic justice-
One minute remaining.
-but I'm concerned about the ripple effect. And one of the ripple effects is, is the foreclosure that have hit the Chicago area. So if we're talking about economic justice, let the justice begin now with the narrative of saying that those homes that are still in foreclosure, those loan modifications should be based on the property-
We are going to try to stay to the topic of the sighting.
Last but not least, in addition to that site, I believe that there should be an adequate leadership development center that it brings in the part of love of nature as well as-
30 seconds remaining.
-the importance of civic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me say again, I know that there are a variety of different issues that people are concerned about tonight in addition to or instead of the sighting of these, or potential sighting of the library in these two parks. You may have some very valid issues. You really may have some incredibly valid points that you seek to make, but this is not the forum for it. This is the opportunity to talk about these two potential sites in Washington Park and in Jackson Park. So we're going to try to stay on what is germane to the topic. Out of respect to the people who came here and the people who are in the other room, they came to talk about the sighting or potential sighting of the Presidential Library. Thank you. Dr. Mosina?
She tried to get me to go before him. Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is David Mosina. I'm the president and CEO of the Museum of Science and Industry. I'm also a Hyde Park resident for over 40 years. I'm a member of the University of Chicago Community Advisory Board, and I support the library coming to the South Side. To me, the most significant benefit will be the inspirational impact the library can have on our youth. Cultural institutions can open minds, open doors, and open worlds. As the president of MSI, I meet people almost every day who tell me how our museum has changed their lives by inspiring them to become scientists and engineers, mathematicians and doctors. Imagine the students who visit the Obama Presidential Library. They'll see their own potential in a president of the United States from this very neighborhood as they grow to become tomorrow's citizens and leaders. The city's parks are one of our greatest and most impressive, and most important and precious assets, and we must be faithful stewards of them. precious assets, and we must be faithful stewards of them. I deeply respect the park advocates for their watchdog role and the stewardship-
One minute remaining.
...on behalf of our parks. We're a much better city for their efforts. However, there are many good precedents for museums and museum expansions in our city which have added greatly to the vitality and the culture of Chicago as a world-class city. The Obama Presidential Library on the South Side will have a small footprint on parkland, but a large impact in our community.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm honored to support this historic endeavor and the community's future. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mosina. I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege to acknowledge Alderman Willie Cochran in whose ward we sit. Alderman, thank you very much. Our next speaker?
Good evening, panel.
Good evening.
Good evening, South Side. You have referred to us respecting the process. I want the library to come to Chicago so bad that if he were to take it to New York, I would take whatever literary skills I might possess and write a book called The Adacity The process says- This is from the Administrative Office of the Courts, which dictates how this process should proceed. If the proposer is requesting a change-
One minute remaining.
-the request must set forth the recommended change and the proposer's reasons for proposing the change. Questions or requests submitted after the due date and time will not be answered. I'm a spiritual resident of North Longdale. I believe in what it is going to do in terms of-
Thirty seconds remaining.
...to that community. I love you, South Side. Trust me. But in terms of the contribution that it can make to some people who need this economic engine, there's no comparison. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bernita Johnson Gabriel. I'm the Executive Director for Quad Communities Development Corporation, and I'm also a resident of neighboring Bronzeville. A piece of the pie, a piece of the pie. You always hear us say, "A piece of the pie." What exactly does that mean for the South Side? It means economic development, economic growth, economic empowerment. 800,000 new visitors will command restaurants, shops, entertainment, and last but certainly not least, a cultural experience. Think about that for a moment. McCormick Place attracts nearly 3 million visitors annually. The South Side would be on pace to attract nearly 1 million visitors. What is conceivably a sliver of either park can be parlayed into a huge piece of the pie for South Side communities that have endured years of disinvestment. I appreciate the sentiment of those who would try to tell you- One minute remaining. -that parks should be off limits for the Obama Library. I really do. But most likely, they have not experienced the decline and disinvestment these communities have endured. They most likely do not live in communities with double-digit unemployment, crime, and an overall substandard quality of life. The Obama Presidential Library will be a catalyst like no other and give the South Side a bigger piece of the pie. Bring it on home to the South Side. Bring it on home. Thank you. Would you please call the next six speakers?
Alderman Willie Cochran, Dori M.C.H.O.R.T.R.
McCord. Mr. Blackmore, could you just wait one second while we call the rest of the people? Thank you.
Yes. Ava B.E.N.E.Z.R.A. Maddie Butler. Rue, and the spelling of the last name is T.A.N.G.L.I.A.N.G. And the last one, the spelling of the name is Q.U.F.U.R.U.A.N.
Thank you, Mr. Blackmore. Please proceed.
Thank you. I have seen black people, colored folks, Negroes, African-Americans, or whatever name you go by today being hoodwinked by so-called economic development. The one who bears the gift is the University of Chicago, historically have not been good neighbors and a friend to people of color, black people. Black people. Now they bear the gift and say it's economic development, $600 million. Do you think you'll get it, you African-American? Colored folks, Negroes, or black whatever name you go by, that when that development comes, you won't get it? Will you, will this development make a community agreement with the black community that these job, good services, and contracts will be delivered? My people, don't go for the okey-dokey here. Don't rush. Demand that this Park District have several community meetings, just not these two, and come down to the park board and let them know. These political hacks come up here, black political hacks also preaching and telling you, but they're working for the enemy-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-working for the enemy. Go to the grad school of the University of Chicago and see how many black people in the medical school. How many are in these different departments? They have devastated the community, University of Chicago, all over State Street. They got land that they want to use your own. Don't use taxpayers' land. The Park District and politicians-
You have exceeded two minutes.
-stay out of it. Stay out of it. I want my people to be-
Mr. Blackmore.
-get good service, contracts, and jobs, and don't trust the University of Chicago and so-called black leadership and political hacks.
Thank you, Mr. Blackmore. Thank you. You may proceed.
I would like to start by thanking members of the committee for providing this opportunity for testimony.
Excuse me, could we quiet down, please? Thank you.
My name is Reginald Armstrong. I'm the Membership Experience Director and Operation Director for the South Side and Wabash YMCA's. I am here today to express the wise, full support of building the Obama Presidential Library on Chicago's South Side, either Washington or Jackson Park. In the early 2000s, the Obamas brought their young daughters to the South Side Y on 63rd and Stony for their birthday parties. In addition, this state Senator Obama obtained state funding to expand the facility with a 7,000-square-foot early learning annex to support 100 additional early childhood slots for local families. We are proud of the President of the United States that he has continued that commitment to the Y through his fight for the expansion of early childhood education opportunities in our nation's most challenging neighborhoods. We enthusiastically welcome the opportunity to bring more opportunity to continue his legacy here on the South Side. The YMCA is a logical and natural fit for a robust, problematic-
One minute remaining.
...celebration with the Barack Obama Foundation and Presidential Library, not only because of Obama's own personal connection to the Y, but because we align ourselves together. The Y's mission anchors are academic readiness, character development, balance provision, and healthy living. Again, the Y of Metropolitan Chicago looks forward to continuing the president's legacy as an advocate for youth and families here in Chicago on the South Side. Bring it on home.
Thank you. Our next speaker? Alderman, you may go.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And I'm so glad to have you all out today in the numbers that are here. Ladies and gentlemen, do you all remember the night that the inauguration took place and we won the election? And how many people were down in that park? Wasn't that exciting? Do you all remember when we went out to Washington, DC, and we filled the parkway out, out there with millions of people? It is just as exciting to talk about bringing this home today. And I just want to say this, I want to welcome the president back home. I want to welcome Michelle back home. I want to welcome the girls back home, and I want to welcome economic development, jobs, and opportunities, and improved education, and safety, and other things that go along with that to our communities. And so, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much for coming out, and we want to send a message to the president, "Come home. We can take care of this park issue, and we welcome you, and we are very proud of you and your family for the work that they have done." Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dori McCord of the CEO of the YWCA Metropolitan Chicago, where we serve over 200,000, where we serve over 200,000 women and families. We know the significant impact that economic opportunities can have for women, their families, and their communities through our providing services for over 50 years throughout the South Side of Chicago. As a community stakeholder, we are supportive of the proposed placement of either South Side location. There's a proverb that says, "That which is done for us and not with us is done to us." And our women do not need others to tell them how the parkland should be used for them. Rather, we'd like to work with the Obama Presidential Library to use the parkland in a way that would best serve them and create greater economic opportunities for them and their families. In our written testimony which I'll provide, we outline how using the parkland will also contribute to better safety, learning opportunities for our youth-
One minute remaining.
...including our young parents that are here with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you testify, could you hold one second while we call the next six speakers?
Alex P.L.E.T.Z. Emma L.O.B.O.U.T.Y. And some of these. Sarah W.A.R.T.I.N.I.
Please begin. You may begin. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maddie Butler, and I am a resident of the Woodlawn Community. I am also the Executive Director of Woodlawn East Community and Neighbors, which has served this community for some 38 years. I live on 65th and Stony. I have lived there for, since 1963. And so, I am an elder here speaking for the library to come to the South Side. It does make a difference to me if it comes to Woodlawn, because that's where I live. It doesn't make a difference to me if it comes to another part of the South Side, because I live on the South Side. So wherever it comes, it would be added to the South Side and to Chicago. It's the right thing to do, to use public land for public use. And there is nothing more public than the President of the United States Library. And so, I say it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do for the University of Chicago to be the forerunner, because Michelle Obama-
One minute remaining.
-worked at the University of Chicago. It's the right thing to do for our children, for our economic development, for the City of Chicago. We hope you will do what is the right thing to do with that land.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Mr. Scoussey?
Good evening. My name is Peter Scoussey. I'm Executive Vice President at the Metropolitan Planning Council. Consistent with the principles we communicated to the Barack Obama Presidential Foundation in December, the Metropolitan Planning Council is pleased that the University of Chicago's two proposals, proposed sites for the Barack Obama Presidential Library are near public transportation and in areas that will benefit from economic development and enhanced amenities. This is generally responsive to three of MPC's four guiding principles. Clearly, the most vexing of our four guiding principles is the use of parkland. MPC is listening to the community residents who want this prestigious institution and all of its positive impacts for an area that has long been too far forgotten. Although we have stated that park space should not be the first choice, MPC understands that locating the library in or near either Jackson Park or Washington Park has great potential to bring value to surrounding neighborhoods and the city and region as a whole. Any parkland occupied by the future library must be replaced with an equal or greater amount of new green space nearby identified and developed following community input.
One minute remaining.
MPC reiterates that the chosen site must be well-served by public transportation, and the additional investments in nearby land and infrastructure should be coordinated to maximize public access and benefit. Restoration of the nearby parks, inspired by Frederick Law Olmsted's original vision, is a prime example of such investments. Restoring these public spaces to the splendor of Olmsted's original vision would significantly enhance their value to the neighborhood and the entire South Side. We are grateful to-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-Olmsted expert Vicky Rannie and her spouse George Rannie, who have put their thoughtful contributions into a roadmap. When its doors open, the President Barack Obama Library will be one of only 14 Presidential Libraries in the nation. MPC stands ready, as we have for 80 years, to support quality, well-planned development in Chicago and across our region. There are critical, specific details that would need to be hammered out on commitments to improved transit, local economic development, enhanced neighborhood amenities, and replacement of park space.
You have a seat in your two minutes.
We look forward to opening the parks' doors in the near future. The park's doors in the near future. Thank you very much.
I would ask, if you have to have conversations, would you please step outside? Because the noise level is getting to the point where the people who are testifying cannot be heard by the rest of the audience. So please respect the speakers by stepping outside to have sidebar conversations. You will be allowed to return. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Ava Benazra, and I'm with a group called the Campaign for Equitable Policing. It's a campaign of the South Side Solidarity Network. And I think we all recognize tonight that the Obama Library coming to the UFC in the South Side would raise unique opportunities. But I think it's also clear that it raises some particular challenges that I think we need to discuss.
Are there challenges for the Park District?
The Park District insofar as it's policed by the CPD and the UCPD, which is meaningfully impacted-
The Park District isn't policed by the CPD.
It's, indeed. However, if the UFC acquires this land and puts the library in the space-
The UFC is not proposing to acquire the land. I want to be clear. I want to be clear. I want to be clear, because I don't want her, I don't want her to start down the road.
I understand. I understand. I think, though, that one of the issues that is brought up by, by this entire conversation tonight is whether or not the Obama Library coming to the South Side and having as its institutional home, the UFC, whether or not that means the expansion of the UCPD's jurisdiction.
One minute remaining.
Okay, I'll try to shorten this.
Let her speak, please.
Thank you. So, sure. So historically, as the UFC's property holdings has expanded, or has their interest in the South Side expanded, as it would with this library coming here, so too has the UCPD's jurisdiction. And meaning now that it's the primary police force, or the large police force for over 6.5 square miles of the South Side. And that's a significant switch.
Thirty seconds remaining. Let her speak, please.
Thank you. That's a significant switch. It's not a simple move between a police force that offer equal services, the CPD and the UCPD. Indeed, the UCPD offers less community accountability in a few meaningful ways. Not only does it offer almost no complaint process for non-students, but indeed, it refuses to release records of its stops, ensuring that racial profiling can occur with almost total impunity. I bring this up today because I think it's important when talking about the future for President Obama's, you know, institutional legacy, that we remember, for example, that one of Obama's earliest actions in Illinois was to enact legislation requiring that every public police department-
You have exceeded two minutes.
Let her finish.
Thank you. In Illinois, was to make public and analyze data on racial profiling, information that the UCPD has thus far, despite community calls for it, has refused to release. He has continued this work through his My Brothers Keeper Initiative, and I think it's important to keep this consideration in mind when discussing the future home of this legacy.
Can you conclude?
Sure. By bringing this up, I hope to invite the UFC to enter into a dialogue with Hyde Park residents and community members. Park residents and community members about these changes so that this community can get the police force it deserves. Thank you.
Let me, let me say that however valid these concerns may be, that's not the purpose of this hearing. Let me also say, just for clarity, excuse me, excuse me. I would ask you to be polite. I would also let you, want to let you know that the Presidential Library, if it should be located here, would not be a library that is operated by the University of Chicago. Presidential Libraries are operated by the US Park Service in conjunction with the Presidential Foundation. So that's not a University of Chicago function at all. Next speaker.
Ms. Trina Black.
Call the next six speakers, please.
Ms. Koma Murray. Debbie Thompson. Willie Eager. Philip Williams. Van BIS TROW. Stephanie Franklin.
All right. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Maltz. I have been a South Side residence for 40, resident for 45 years. I'm also Chair of the Board of Friends of the Parks. And we've been around for 40 years, preserving, protecting and improving parks. Friends of the Parks is excited at the prospect of the Barack Obama Presidential Library coming to the South Side of Chicago. The President and First Lady are deeply connected to this community. We also applaud the sighting of the library in a neighborhood such as Washington Park or Woodlawn, where the economic benefits related to the library could greatly enhance neighborhoods in need of attention. Friends of the Parks opposes the sighting of the Obama Presidential Library in either of our historic parks. These parks were designed by one of the world's most visionary landscape architects, Frederick Law Olmsted, famous for designing urban parks throughout our country for generations of people to enjoy. They are neither the City of Chicago's, the Chicago Park District, nor the University of Chicago's to carve up and give away. There is way too much vacant land on the South Side, which could be creatively utilized to build a dynamic Presidential Library befitting a truly urban president. Vacant land like the 11 acres on 55th and King, across from Washington Park, could transform the Washington Park community, reap economic benefits, have accessible transportation and engage community partnerships. Let's push for an urban design that celebrates the integrity of her historic parks and at the same time celebrates and acknowledges our long neglected South Side communities by utilizing vacant and unused land. Let's not accept the argument that the Obama Presidential Library has to be in a park on the South Side or we will risk losing it. Let's challenge our leaders to do better and think more creatively. I think Barack Obama, community organizer, would be proud of us if we did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Thanks. Hello, my name is Emma LaBounty and I'm not going to go back and echo some of the prior sentiments about the UCPD, but I think it is important that the university's role in this bid and in what happens with the land and these, like, you know, ensuing transformations is something that's clarified. Because we have seen as the university expands its presence on the South Side and accompanying expansion of the jurisdiction of the University of Chicago Police Department and some attendant concerns about lack of community transparency and accountability and racial profiling that goes along with that. I think that it's important to stress, and we talk a lot about the Obama Presidential Library as a potential jewel for the South Side, but I think it's important to stress that we don't just need something, the South Side doesn't just need something to show the world, it needs something that's going to actively be enriching the communities that South Siders inhabit day to day. And I think that encompasses a lot of things and there are a lot of conversations involved in what bringing the Presidential Library to the South Side in a way where it was a part of a broader transformation of the South Side for South Side residents, what that means.
One minute remaining.
And I think it means things, including with these questions about potential UCPD jurisdiction expansion, what would the UCPD do to live up to the legacy of a president who spent one of, like, his time in the Illinois Legislature fighting for police accountability, for transparency, for us, an examination and in racial profiling? What it would mean to partner with the community in ways that don't just bring economic development in these instances.
Thirty seconds remaining.
But in which bring, you know, true service to community, health needs, including expansion of adult trauma care, and also just investment in our communities in terms of, you know, sustained development outside of just this one opportunity. So I think it can't just be a jewel, it needs to be something that is really involved in a larger community process.
Thank you so much. Trina Black. Mr. Black?
All right. Thank you very, very much. I don't come with any paper prepared. I'm in a place where I taught for more than six years, Hyde Park High School, so it brings back great memories. And I can say to all of you, at the age of 96, I can say to all of you, I used to be your age. So look forward to being that age. And then you will see experiences like the rise of Barack Obama. I grew up on the South Side of Chicago. That's where I would like to have the library. I also spent many years, many times in Washington Park. That's my prejudice to have the library. I believe that it carries so much history that it can prove to all young people and older people, regardless to race, that as Sam Cooke sang so eloquently, "A change is going to come." And that library, being located there, will be another indication of the change that will come. And the idea is to be like Barack Obama, that when the change comes, be prepared and bring many of the people all across the world to see how he accomplished what many thought was the impossible. He proved, along with all of us here, that the impossible, we do that right now. And so the library has to be in Chicago, on the South Side. My preference is Washington Park. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I point a personal privilege, I'd like to recognize our neighboring Alderman, Alderman Leslie Hairston. Thank you. Our next speaker, please. But before you start to speak, would you please announce the next six speakers so that we can have them line up? Please line up if your name is called so that we can keep moving.
Next, we have Ted Manuel, Robert Kaufman, Thomas McCray, Danita. The last name is, cannot make that out, but she's a, it looks like A R T H E R. Cassandra Franks.
Frances.
Frances.
All right. We will begin. Thank you for your patience.
My name is Van Bistro. I worked for the University of Chicago for the last 40 years. I will not refer to it as the evil empire, but I think it has done good things. However, you can't hear me, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Many of the discussions that have been held so far have been appropriately lauding the benefits of the Presidential Library moving to the South Side, and I fully support that idea. The part that doesn't follow for me is that it has to be located in a park. It will have all of those benefits that come to the South Side, whether it's located in a park or not. In fact, one of the challenges that, as I understand it, the commission that is trying to cite this library, is to benefit a neighborhood that needs it. Parks are not neighborhoods, they're surrounded by neighborhoods. There are neighborhoods on the South Side that are in need of economic development and moving, removing blighted property and things like that.
One minute remaining.
The park is the last place that needs that kind of work. And so I fully support the idea of the Presidential Library on the South Side. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a terrible idea to conflate the two issues. And when the Chair of this, of this meeting defines the problem to be a choice between two evils, we should not give in to that. We should, we should insist on the best outcome. And that would be developing the library in a neighborhood that needs development, not in the middle of a park.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Eager. I'm Vice President, Chicago for Preservation of Affordable Housing Incorporated, a not-for-profit developer engaged in a multi-phase, multi-year redevelopment project across Woodlawn. I'm here to voice my support for citing the Barack Obama Presidential Library Museum in this neighborhood, and I urge you to do all that you can to help in that effort. Along with our partners at the City of Chicago, the University of Chicago and across the community, we have invested more than $100 million here since 2008 to transform the former troubled Grove Park Plaza along Cottage Grove into a mixed-income, mixed-use community that has brought new life to this area. The Presidential Library will bring that area's revitalization to a new level, building upon a resurgence already in progress. Estimates are that it will attract dozens of businesses and create more than 1,000 permanent jobs. I couldn't think of a better location. In addition to the economic benefits the Obama Presidential Library will bring to the South Side, it also will renew the legacy of our beautiful parks.
One minute remaining.
Bringing hundreds of thousands of new visitors to enjoy the grandeur of the Jackson and Washington Parks and this community's many, many other amenities. Its lakefront, its access to public transportation, its tree-lined neighborhoods and a historic legacy dating back to the World's Fair. And just as the library will honor our nation's first African-American president, building it in this community recognizes the important role the South Side continues to play in Chicago's history and in its future. Woodlawn's engaged community, of which we are proud to be members, would serve as responsible stewards for this national treasure, and we will be honored to be part of that important task. We urge you to help make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Franklin. I'm the President of the Nichols Park Advisory Council, and I have worked on behalf of parks for a long time, for many years. First of all, let me say that of course, and yes, and definitely, President Obama's library should be on the South Side. There is no question about that. Not only in Chicago, but on the South Side of Chicago. That's very, very important. And I can't imagine that the Obama family would choose any other location. However, let me say this, parks are not landbanks. They are not empty land waiting to be developed. They are developed, they are parks. And that is extremely important. Land is finite, and once it's gone, it's simply gone. And the reason, of course, that people want to have their particular pet project, their museum, their welcome center, whatever, in a park, is because the parks are, are jewels and they do provide a jewel-like setting. However, 20 acres is 13 and 1/3 football fields. That's an enormous amount of space and not necessary for an urban library. The library could be very, very nicely on 11 acres. And it would have a view of the park and the gardens across the street, not to be equaled anywhere. It should not, the building itself does not need to go in a park. 11 acres is a lot of land, and it could have gardens around it, but it should be near Washington Park, across the street from Washington Park, so that the gardens, but not in Washington Park, so that the gardens would be an asset to the building, which would be across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to, first of all, say, politics, democracy is not always sexy, not always pretty, but my wife is. But I want to say from the West Side contingent, we want to make sure that you all know that the West Side of Chicago supports the Obama Presidential Library being located here in Chicago. As somebody stated about the greatest economic impact, the greatest economic impact would be the North Lyndale Community, where you have 23 acres, owned by the city, shovel-ready, ready to go, don't have to go ahead and take public space, none of that good stuff. We got great location, Eisenhower Expressway, we have the Blue Line, we have multiple bus lines there. So just understand is that the North Lyndale UIC proposal is also a finalist, it's not just the University of Chicago, okay? Now, the land is owned by the city of Chicago. Something I want to refer to with the Jackson Park, we got the Chicago Chargers out of Columbus Park is the best football team in Chicago, so you know I was going to stand up for the West Side. Now, I want to take a clarity about something, I want to go with Ms. Butler says, that, you know, yeah, we have museums in the Chicago Park District land.
One minute remaining.
But those museums and institutions are governed by the Chicago Park District and not conveyed over to another entity. So, yeah, it can coexist, but we not going to take a position as, you know, about the whole thing about being in a park. We just wanted to inform you that there is another viable site that is a finalist for the Presidential Library. And the city of Chicago should actually be doing the same thing like this throughout the city because it's just to educate you all about what's going on. As I like to say, ignorance should be listed as a disease on the CDC website because it's contagious and easily spread. So understand, there's two sites in Chicago that's being considered by the Obama Presidential Library Commission Committee. And please, let's not make this thing about West Side versus South Side. The last time I checked, President Obama was, once upon a time, my US Senator, connecting all communities. And thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. There are three sites in Chicago being proposed. Three sites. Three sites. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Willie Wilson. I'm the next mayor of the city of Chicago. And one thing to say is that I pledge to all of you all that this library, when I become mayor, will be here in this neighborhood. And that's all I got to say. I bow eye, all right?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi. I'm a South Sider. I'm a born and raised South Sider. I graduated here from Hyde Park in 2010, and I would like to say, I would like to say that I support the University of Chicago, I'm sorry, I support the Barack Obama Presidential Library coming to the South Side, but I do not support land in the Park District being devied up to do that. The reason I do not support that is because, just as Sir mentioned before, there are other sites that are looking to host this library. And the only reason why we're talking about devying up South Side parkland is so that the University of Chicago can get it. The reason that the University of Chicago wants that is for what they always wanted it for: money. Money that is not going to go in our community, as the Elder before said. I represent an organization that has been asking, demanding that the University of Chicago provide a travel center for four years. We have been ignored for four years. So you, as a black person, ask yourself, why would you want to give the Presidential, the first black president's Presidential Library to an institution that has not at all shown any concern, care or priority for your life?
Young lady.
Anybody that says that the relationship that the University of Chicago has with the community has nothing to do with the library is a liar and working for the University of Chicago. The young black people, the young black people want to see.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Changes, everlasting changes. Not three years' worth of $20 million or traffickers or visitors. This school needs investment. CVS needs investment. South Shore needs investment.
Your time is up.
We do not need a library to better our community. We need what's already in the community to be better.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I'm Thomas McElroy. I own an African-American technology firm here in Chicago. I own an African-American technology firm here in Chicago and have done so since one week after September 11th, 2001. The kinds of jobs that this library will create and afford are those that will allow African-Americans and other minority and women-owned businesses to pay salaries, pay mortgages, put kids through school. None of these will be minimum wage jobs. My reasons for supporting this library and this library development, it is an opportunity to actually change the face of technology and change the face of minority businesses and professional services here in Chicago, and it is an opportunity that this city should not miss or lose. I hope we bring it home, we should bring it home. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Cassandra Francis, President of Friends of the Parks. Friends of the Parks is thrilled the Obamas are considering Chicago as the home of the Obama Presidential Library, an institution that we agree will create tremendous economic and cultural development for this host city. We understand the prestigious academic, archival, and educational advantages that this facility will bring to Chicago, and we celebrate potential partnerships between the Presidential Library and the University of Chicago and other institutions in the city. However, Friends of the Parks opposes the placement of the library in a park or public open space. I will, I am white, you've figured that out. I'm not from here, but I'm fighting for this park for you all. However, however, there are Chicago proposals we do support. Now, while we support the UIC proposal, which is net add of green space, we do support a Washington Park neighborhood proposal. No one's talking about that green site on that map. Green site, out of the park, university-owned.
One minute remaining.
Martin Luther King Drive, on the west side of Martin Luther King Drive, which would support a mid-rise urban building that would be the second urban Presidential Library. This is an appropriate urban solution, responsible use of land, similar to the recent Logan Center for the Arts building just blocks away. It would allow the Presidential Library to serve as a beacon for the community and a sensitive institutional neighbor to its surroundings. All of the economic benefits discussed will come to the neighborhood whether it's on the east or west side of Martin Luther King Drive.
Thirty seconds remaining.
We put into question the University of Chicago's premise that the site must be at least 25 acres, which would cause them to need the additional parkland beyond their own 11-acre site. The first urban Presidential Library is the Kennedy Library in Boston, which resides on a 10-acre site. Further, it's important to note that the Obama Presidential Library should be logically smaller than previous Presidential Libraries due to the digital and virtual nature of modern-day archives and exhibits. We also oppose the transfer of public parkland, which is held for the benefit of the public, from the Chicago Park District to another public agency or to a private entity. This is an issue that's being followed very closely by a national platform of parties. Chicago's Washington Park, part of Chicago's South Park System, was designed by Frederick Law Homestead. Let me just, if I can just say one more thing, I was interrupted.
Let her conclude, please conclude, though.
Let me conclude. We understand the President and Mrs. Obama have the ultimate decision on where they are building this important institution, but the community and the citizens of Chicago deserve their open space. This should not be a choice. In closing, I would like to quote someone who basically said, "Chicago's historic parks should be enhanced by the Presidential Library, not the home of one." So let's bring the Obama Presidential Library home, but let's also enhance this historic park and the open space it provides for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you start, Sir, can we call the next speakers so they can line up? Please call the next six speakers.
David Fuller. Jenny, spelling of the last name is H-O-T-A-L-I-N-G. Jay Forman. Malav is the last name. I just have Rosemary on here, no last name. Mary Jane Richardson Apartments, this person is from. Lorenzo Young.
You may proceed, thank you.
My name is Guyon Forman, and I'm the President of Friends of the Community. I'm speaking today in support of using parkland to build the Barack Obama Presidential Library. As a little boy, Washington Park was my front yard. I grew up across the street from the park. It's where I learned to fish in a lagoon, I ran cross-country track, played archery, basketball, tennis. In Jackson Park, I probably even danced with some of y'all at the house music picnic. I personally invested time and money into Washington Park and Woodlawn neighborhoods. Why? For one reason, I've always believed in the potential of these communities. I've experienced firsthand the benefits of park space, so I do not take the idea lightly of using park space for the library. In fact, a decision like this should only be made after evaluating the opportunity and the opportunity cost. Upon doing so, you quickly realize that the library represents a unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
One minute remaining.
An opportunity that will directly benefit community residents with jobs, businesses, investment, and inspiration on a global stage. If one truly cares about the people and what's in the best interest of the community, one has to evaluate this moment. I love trees, I love the parks, but I love our people more. Our people need opportunity. We can plant some more trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name is Kamal Murray, I'm the Executive Director of the Access, Tennis, and Education Foundation, and I do work in and around Washington Park every day of the year. And during times and days like today, the park lays idle. Five years from now, we hope that those kids are able to walk into a beautiful building on parkland and experience creative arts, sports, academics, read a book, or use the internet. I'm a little disappointed in all of us, because we are sitting here making this a conversation about a structure, when this is really a conversation about a legacy. And if he was here, he would be really disappointed, because as a kid who rode the 28 bus down Stony Island to 47th Street every single day, I needed a symbol of hope. I needed something to keep me going towards high school graduation when I was starting to go the other way. If I had the opportunity to ride the bus past the Barack Obama Library, it would be a symbol of what's possible. So one of the things that our Black meaning on the South Side is a constant reminder, not a reminder that's green in the summer, but a constant reminder every day of the year of what's possible if you stay on the right track.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Jade, I'm 12 years old, and Chicago is my home, so I didn't prepare anything, I want to speak from my heart. I think that the library needs to be in the South Side of Chicago, because people everywhere need more opportunities, but especially a lot of the kids in Chicago. And the library would not waste park space. If anything, it would make the parks better. It's not wasting the space, it's not taking away from the space, it's simply using it for a different cause, and it's really something that we all need. I really think that the library would impact our communities in great ways. And I don't know if you can see my hat, but I'm trying to bring it on home.
Good job. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name is Bill Doc Walls, and I'm actually the next mayor of the city of Chicago. It's a pleasure to be here. I grew up not far from here, right over in the South Shore area at 81st and Euclid. I learned to swim in Washington Park, I learned to play basketball in Jackson Park. So parks are important to me, but more important to our community. Communities are built around parks, schools, and libraries. They are competing interests, they're equal interests, so whether it's a park in that space or a library in that space really doesn't matter, as long as it's accessible to the community. So the things that concern me are the community benefits agreement, for example. Who will benefit from the building of that library? Will it be the people who were inconvenienced during that construction period, the people whose stores had to shut down because patrons weren't able to get there, there were detour signs, people were slowed up, their travel to and from work and school was extended? Will the children actually be able to afford to go into that library? They say there'll be 800,000 people visiting that library, 400,000 they expect to come from outside of the city of Chicago.
One minute remaining.
So that means 400,000 are people right here in the city of Chicago who, year after year, will be expected to utilize that library to make it economically sustainable. But will the community benefit from that? So we need to talk about a community benefits agreement, and we also need to talk about what comes next. If not an Obama library there, what do we do as a community? We get a lot of people to come out for something like this, and that's fantastic. Obama is a big draw, but we ought to be equally as focused on what our children need, so that they can grow and develop and be safe in the streets of Chicago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Hoteling, and I'm Vice President of Government Affairs at the Chicago Botanic Garden. Barack Obama's presidency will be remembered in part for his commitment to the environment and education, and for First Lady Michelle Obama's commitment to the White House vegetable garden, healthy eating, and exercise. A Presidential Library on Chicago's South Side, planned carefully to enhance our park system and include flower and vegetable gardens, can make an impressive statement with lasting impact. The Chicago Botanic Garden, one of the great public gardens of the world, would be pleased to contribute to this vision and offers counsel in the design and operation of gardening components to the library. The garden's educational spectrum includes programs for students from pre-kindergarten through PhD, including Wendy's Day Harvest, offering training in urban agriculture for youth, adults, and ex-offenders. The importance of nature is indisputable. In an increasingly technological world, a garden is the perfect anecdote. And Cicero's observation, "If you have a garden and a library, you have everything you need," suggests that this combination is timeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you hold for one moment? Can you call the next six speakers?
Bobby Townsend.
Thank you for your patience.
Tavia Segal. Danielle Wilson. Chewie Garcia. John Vincy. Diamond Green.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Hello, my name is Don Hall, I'm a sophomore in college, and I've lived on the South Side of Chicago all of my life. The Presidential Center would be a great thing to bring to the South Side. I am a part of this program called Metro Squash, where we utilize squash, education, academics, mentoring, cultural enrichment, and community service to empower CPS students to fully reach their full potential. The Presidential Library would be a great thing to bring to the South Side, so that we will be able to utilize it, as well as other CPS students and other people in the community. I believe that this would be a great opportunity for Washington Park, and that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maya Hodari, and this is... Maria Hodari. I am, we are residents of the Woodlawn Community. I represent the Woodlawn Neighbors Association, a contingent of neighbors who've been working hard in Woodlawn to improve the quality of life for everyone. And most importantly, I'm a parent, and I think about the opportunity that we have to bring something very tremendous that our children will benefit from, how we can extend our blocks and our yards and give them the opportunity to ride their bike to a Presidential Library. We, me, our neighbors in Woodlawn, fully support the Park District conveying land to create an opportunity for our children. I hope you understand that we don't want this, we need this. We need to continue to work to bring amenities like this and benefit all of our families on the South Side, so I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bobby Townsend. I was, I'm for the library for the South Side, but knowing President Obama, I know him as Obama, he taught me Eugenia Byrne Hope Center. It's an organizing black group on the South Side with Dr. Sakoni Karanda. Obama would be against taking green space initiative from the area. If you act, I'm with Cecilia Batlin, there's plenty of land, there's plenty of other things that can build this library, which we're going to get, but it's not going to be in Park District. It'll be won by Park District. And like I said, Robin, if you're in the House, your name has been called.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Commissioner, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Hasuf Garcia, from the 7th District.
Please allow him to speak, please allow him to speak. If you respect him, allow him to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair and honorable members of this panel. Washington Park is a jewel in the city's park system, where families have gathered for more than 100 years to socialize, break bread, and celebrate. Kids play softball, baseball, basketball, and soccer in the park, and whole neighborhoods gather for events that range from community dance performances to public music concerts. The park is a terminus of Chicago's annual Bud Billiken Parade, and each year, thousands come from across the region to the annual African Festival of the Arts. As one of our public park systems' most cherished resources, Washington Park is a vital success access point for recreation, play, and the solace that comes from the natural rather than the built-up environment. And along with all of our public parks, Washington Park belongs to the people as a free, open, and critical antidote to the concrete and brick that dominates so much of our landscape for so many of our residents. The people of Chicago are rightly opposed to encroachment on their public parklands, yet the mayor wants to allow a private institution to confiscate land.
One minute remaining.
They do not own people's mind. In essence, I want to say this evening that there are plenty of spaces all over the South Side to locate the Presidential Obama Library. Our leaders should be stewards of our park's continued survival. Instead, the mayor has broken the fundamental public trust by supporting this unnecessary land grab. That's the mark of a mayor who neither understands nor cares about our people or their public assets. I reject that position. The parks belong to all of us, and I stand with the growing public campaign to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you please hold? Are there others who are in line to speak?
Me, me.
I know, but I want to try to, if you would hold, would you please call the other speakers?
Chai Rhymefest Smith. Alan Robinson. Lawrence N-E-B-O-N. Jerry Alderman. Linda, the spelling of the last name is J-E-R-M-I-N-G. Angela Ford. Veronica Morris. Victoria Crowder. Alex Goldberg.
Thank you, you may start now, Sir.
My name is John Vinci, I'm a Chicago architect, and I want to say that I was an early supporter of Obama, as everybody in this room, I'm sure, was. And we were so happy when he won, because we thought our rights would be extended and we wouldn't have to worry anymore. And now, representing Obama, we have a bunch of people who are trying to steal from us our parkland. I mean, this is not what rights are about. The parks are for everybody, and we should not be treated... The parks are for everybody and we should not be treated like, like people where you could steal the parks. They try to steal it for you of I and, and we almost lost, uh, the park on the, what is it called, Garfield Park. We, you know, we stuck schools in the park which are now archaic and we can't expand them. Dusabu Museum is not a very beautiful museum, but it's, I mean, it has a purpose, but it should never have been in the park. It should have been then in, in the land. And, and I wanna say something else.
One minute remaining.
Uh, I wanna say one other thing. The presentation tonight was a sham. First of all, when they say they're not gonna take or condemn land for buildings, which will probably have to be done if they wanna put the museum on existing, non-park land. What are they gonna do when they say they're gonna build hotels and stores and everything? They're gonna condemn your buildings. So, I mean, think about it. Who's gonna benefit by that?
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is London Dixon. I'm a product of Hyde Park High School and Barack Obama came to this area, Barack Obama came to this area in seventy-seven. I met with him. I met with him at my old job, T W Hillman. I'm familiar about Jackson Park a great deal. Um, I'm a member of Apostolic Church of God and the nominee came in, in January of last year on the thirty-first day of January at one o'clock PM on one of our broadcast stations, one oh-six and three. I took the nomination to the Apostolic Church of God 'cause that's where it came from. It reads like, uh, this is Barack Obama, the President of the United States of America. And he said, uh, my nomination goes back to the Apostolic Church of God back in Chicago. I took the nomination to my pastor, Byron T. Brazier, told him that I wanna be considered for nomination for president 'cause I knew, I'm familiar with Barack Obama. And, um, the original, now look, the original location of...
One minute remaining.
Original location of the Presidential Library should be Sixty-third and Lake Shore Drive. I live in Woodlawn, Sixty-third Street in, in neighborhood of Palms Zone area. So I would like to say thank you for your time and consideration. My name is London Dixon, nominee for president, partisan. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Alex Goldenberg. I'm an alumni of the University of Chicago. I stuck around after I graduated to work in the community with an organization called Stop. We're the group that fought against the closure of the mental health clinic. We fight for affordable housing, for a trauma center and for investment in young people instead of just locking them up. Now let's be clear about what this is that we're talking about today. It's a land grab and it's privatization. And why does the university want it? Because they want power and prestige and to benefit off of this community the way they have for decades. The whole South Side community has been exploited and resources have been extracted by this institution, the University of Chicago. And now people are rolling over backwards for them to come and take more. Well, we've had enough. We will not take it. We are sick and tired of being sick and tired. The University of Chicago denies that black life matters. They don't have a Level One Trauma Center, yet they have the money to provide one. We all know...
One minute remaining.
That if young white students were dying at the rate that young black people are dying, they would have a trauma center yesterday. We know that this is true and yet they don't. And we have to ask ourselves why that is. So why are we so quick to allow them to honor the legacy of the first black president? Do we think that they value black life? They talk about how this is gonna bring jobs. We've all been citing the one study that they've commissioned, that they've commissioned, yet there's other studies that show that after a few years...
Thirty seconds remaining.
The visitation to the libraries peters out, that money dries up. And where will we be at? The university will still be putting out brochures, attracting people, raising money off of the name of the first black president and the South Side will be in a worse off position than it is now. And we still won't have a Level One Trauma Center.
Your time is up.
So it's time for us to say no. We will not allow the university to get the power and prestige of the Presidential Library until they open up a trauma center, until they invest in the community and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Alderman, President of Open Lands, a fifty-one-year-old regional land conservation organization. We believe that Chicago can give the Obama Library a spectacular setting and in turn the library can provide a catalyst for revitalizing long-abused national treasures. Open Lands recommends creating a Twenty-First Century Plan for the Olmsted Parks in Chicago that sets out a bold vision for restoration and future needs for our diverse population. Washington and Jackson Parks can once again be vibrant community amenities for their neighbors as well as for people from all over the city and the world who will visit the Presidential Library. To celebrate its centennial, the Forest Preserves of Cook County adopted their Next Century Conservation Plan. This plan sets out an inspired set of goals to restore nature, engage people and reap the economic benefits of public open space. Open Lands believes the Obama Library can trigger a Next Century Plan for our Olmsted Parks and guarantee long-term stewardship through meaningful community involvement.
One minute remaining.
We support the five principles clearly articulated by Vicky and George Rannie in last Sunday's Tribune. One, minimize building in the parks. Two, replace any land used for buildings with new or reclaimed park acreage. Three, provide convenient public access and transportation. Four, exploit synergies with existing community and cultural institutions. And five, restore and revitalize the parks. Finally, Open Lands strongly opposes the transfer of parkland to the city. We believe the Park District should maintain, maintain control of the land to ensure the maintenance and integrity of a comprehensive park system. The potential transfer of parkland to the city sets up a dangerous precedent of opportunistic planning and violation of the public trust. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Before you start, would you call the next five speakers so that they can line up? Thank you for your patience.
Kevin Bailey. Mr. Darrell Freeman. First name is E-R-A-N-A, last name is Taylor. June, oh, she already spoke. Yes. June Ward.
Okay. All right. You may start. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I'm Alan Robinson. I live at fifty, on the corner of Fifty-Sixth and Hyde Park Boulevard in the seventeen-hundred building and my view looks right out onto beautiful Jackson Park. Uh, the, um, uh, there's a lot of points that previous speakers have made about the, um, the purpose of parks, to bring people together and I fully support bringing the President, President Obama Presidential Library to our parks to make them stronger. However, one of the, uh, we also need to leverage this opportunity to improve our parks. I and almost all the neighborhoods surrounding Jackson Park are cut off from the Japanese gardens, from the lagoons by Cornell Drive. The potential site for the library in Jackson Park would be in one of the most, uh, one of the most critical sections of the park where kids don't have to cross Cornell Drive to get to the fields, to get to, uh, to get to play areas. So I would strongly recommend that we think about these parks on the large side and for Cornell Drive, move that traffic over to Lake Shore Drive. In Washington, if it's the, to be cited in Washington Park, uh, let's also remember architects, we are comparing to other Presidential Library sites needing twenty acres.
Thirty seconds remaining.
In, uh, non-urban environments, this library will be fundamentally different. It will be engaged to the community. Let's integrate it in the community, either on parkland or outside of parkland, whichever is the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ward.
Yes, my name is June Ward and I'm a supporter of the Barack Obama President Center for the South Side of Chicago. As I've been here all day, I mean, all evening, President Barack have a lot at East State in the city of Chicago on the South Side. My concern is that if the library comes to the South Side, how many of us blacks will get the contract? If the library come to the South Side, what would the housing be? Will the housing be, it gonna start going on where blacks cannot afford to live over here anymore? So, we haven't discussed that. If we want the, uh, the library to be here, let's keep it in our neighborhood and let's keep it affordable for us. 'Cause see like every time I look around, we start fighting for our neighborhood, building our neighborhood up, we get moved out.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Can somebody help lower the microphone, please?
This is not my forte. Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Linda Jennings. I'm an RN at the University of Chicago and I am also in collective bargaining with National Nurses United. I am for a library, the Obama Library. However, I do not want it, it can be on the South Side, the West Side. I do want it in the city. I do not want the University of Chicago, hospitals and clinics taking it over with their takeover spirit and the lab grab that will occur if they get it. They own land west of Chicago, west of King Drive. We would not be having this conversation if the university had their own land. Instead, we have a clandestine meeting with the mayor to have these meetings to inform the South Side of Chicago of the true intent.
One minute remaining.
So I urge the library to be here, but I do not want the University of Chicago, hospital and clinics and the university itself governing it because they will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
God bless you, baby doll. Thank you.
May I please call the next five speakers? Valerie Lenora. Patrice Dexter. Colleen Horn. Chris Dumas. Demas. Susan Rosenberg. Butler Adams.
Thank you. You may start, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Irina Jackson-Taylor. I am an alumni of Diet High School and I was born and raised in the Bronzeville community. The Coalition to Revitalize Diet is not opposed to the Obama Library in Washington Park. However, any proposal from the University of Chicago must include the Diet Global Leadership and Green Technology High School. A plan that is supported by the community and numerous academic institutions. Diet is a jewel in Washington Park. The Bronzeville community knows that, the Washington Park community knows that, and we all know the University of Chicago knows that. Any other plan to either make Diet part of the Obama Library is not acceptable.
One minute remaining.
We want the Diet Global Leadership and Green Technology High School to be included in the campus of the Obama Presidential Library. I wanna make it absolutely clear, do not touch Diet High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Evangel Mama Di Love Yanubian. Founding President of Global Committee commemorating King Days, we are presently involved in resurrecting House Bill zero-zero-one-seven. That would put three visually affirmed days of respect, January fifteenth, principles of human and civil rights, white colors, April fourth, principles of nonviolence, black colors, August twenty-eighth, spiritual and moral principles of righteousness, justice, peace and peoplehood on the school calendar. When you change the brain, you change the behavior. The wearing of the green is on the school calendar and it's about Irish unity and reinforcing their history and we need to do the same thing for the American Civil Rights of Innocence of the nineteen-sixties. I have a donation that I would like to contribute to the Obama Library. It is called the Barack Mobile. It was highly covered on television by Channel Seven, Five, Two and others.
And... One minute remaining.
I'd like to, my concern is the community and there are twenty points being left out of the discussion. And since Jackson Park as well as Washington Park, which houses the Dusabu Museum, which would serve as a nice complement to the, uh, uh, library.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm concerned that we might have to have United States Congressional and Senate hearings because these are national landmark sites and I don't want to see it given away to anybody. The parks belong to the people.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Bailey. I'm a citizen in the Twentieth Ward and also a candidate for Alderman. Local leadership has allowed, aided and facilitated in the displacement of many of the residents in this community and the surrounding communities. There's plenty of vacant land to go around in the Twentieth Ward and the surrounding wards. There's so many different issues that we could, uh, start to fix if we start to rebuild on those vacant properties if we are to get this Presidential land. But we also need to also bring up that if the university will be a part of this, they need to also address some of the other issues and make sure that we have mutual benefits that are going to benefit the communities around them and not just take and do as they see fit. There needs to be absolute dialogue between local leadership, communities and people who are gonna be involved in driving up these plans. So if we're gonna get this, uh, library, let's make sure we get this dialogue going and build on some places that's already available where they've already displaced hundreds of residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Chris Demas and I've lived all eighty-two years of my life in Chicago, grew up on the South Side, still live in the South Side, attended Harper. And I haven't been in this building since nineteen forty-nine when I played against Hyde Park in a basketball game. Now, the reason I am here is just as a private citizen, although I am retired from the City Colleges of Chicago, I served as a dean at Malcolm X College for a number of years. And I am all for Obama. I think he's a wonderful president, he's done a great job. I am all for libraries and I am all for parks. But we need to preserve our green space in Chicago. If we start with, uh, tearing up our park system, what happens if Rauner, God help us, should ever be elected president? Are we gonna put a, a, a library for Rauner in one of our parks?
One minute remaining.
We are setting a precedent, ladies and gentlemen, a precedent which we don't need to do. Yes, yes, we did have the, the museums and we did have Soldiers Field and that monk, that place, what is it, McCormick Place? But that was before people knew better. We know better now.
Thirty seconds remaining.
We do not need, we do not need to tear up our parks. We need our parks in Chicago and God help us, please, please, put pressure on our politicians. I wish we had statesmen. We need statesmen here in Chicago. People who will do the right thing for the people of Chicago, for the people of Illinois, for the people of the United States of America. We don't need land grabbers tearing up our parks and then condemning buildings outside of parks so they can build their nice high rises.
You haven't seen it two minutes?
No, we don't need that. So, folks... So, folks, go parks, go Chicago. We need strong parks, we need the library, we don't need the library in the park.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Susan Rosenberg. I've lived in Hyde Park since 1979 when I attended, started at the University of Chicago. In 1979 at the University of Chicago, they warned us not to go north of, I don't remember, 55th or 53rd because I don't know, we might get mugged or something. I'm glad to see that they've extended their ideas of what's an acceptable place for them to be. When I first heard that they were buying land west of Washington Park, I assumed that they were talking about land that was gonna be used for an Obama Presidential Labor, Library and related development. And I was absolutely shocked to learn that they intended to use that land for, I don't know, other things and try to make most of the library in the park. All of the benefits, if there are benefits, and I do believe there will be many benefits from having an Obama Presidential Library in Chicago and in one of the neighborhoods that needs redevelopment would accrue to those neighborhoods even if the library is built outside of the park. And it should be built outside of the park and not take parkland away.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Uh, my name is Butler Adams. I've been a resident of the Woodline Neighborhood for all my life and my family has been in the neighborhood for almost 100 years. I give architecture tours downtown and I'm certainly interested in the process. Having been to both inaugurations, I think this is historic to certainly bring this to the city of Chicago, the Barack Obama President, Barack Obama Presidential Library. And I'm 100% behind that plan to bring it here to the city of Chicago, especially the South Side in my neighborhood. But I'm not necessarily privy, again, as previous speakers have said, to put it directly in the park and utilize that green space. Yeah, you say we have 1,200 acres and what is 20 out of that? Well, if any of you all own 20 acres, you know that it's a lot of land. And the University of Chicago, again, has that quadrant of land on the northwest corner of 55th and King Drive. As the person from Friends of the Park earlier said, do it an urban way. Instead of spreading out and sprawling as if it were some suburban mall, go up. You would activate the Green Line Station, you could work with the CTA to build.
One minute remaining.
Some type of parking deck there on the west side of the tracks to conserve those who are going to the train station and those who are going to be going to the library. If you're gonna have 800,000 people coming through the community, you wanna have the best amount of public transportation. Just plopping this in the park, and I don't wanna be hypocritical because I'm in favor of the Lucas Museum, but that's on, uh, that's on a parking lot which is not gonna affect green space. I was in favor of the Olympics, which was gonna be temporary structures. This is gonna be permanent and I don't think we should just rush. There is, again, a lot of space in the area. Seeing as the University of Chicago owns this quadrant of land, maybe they can be great stewards of the community, donate that land to the park district. The park district could donate that land to the city and problem solved.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
If I can please call the next five speakers? Parley Baptiste, Alex Pelts, Emma Labonte, Barry Rappaport, Sarah Martini.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Valerie Leonard and we're from the West Side of Chicago, North Landale. I wanna say, first of all, thank you so much for having this hearing and I thank the folks at University of Chicago for sharing with us, I guess, a very broad brush of their vision. What I have yet to hear is why we need parkland. I'm, I'm hearing from folks in the community that there's, you know, number of parcels of land that they already have acquired and have not used and the question remains and I have yet to hear is why we need parkland. The reason we're here is, you probably know that there are two bids in the city of Chicago and the mayor has actually committed to supporting both bids. And I'm all for Chicago and I love everything that I heard here. I think this is democracy at its best. We heard pros, we heard cons, even though we haven't heard why they need parkland, we still had some robust discussion. I would love it if we could have the same robust discussion on the West Side concerning that bid.
One minute remaining.
North Landale, we have not seen development in a coordinated fashion in 60 years. We're one of the poorest communities. It doesn't matter that we're all tiffed. Every piece of land in North Landale is in a tiff and we have yet to see any coordinated development that's gonna benefit us.
Thirty seconds remaining.
So, we're asking that you ask Mayor Emanuel to provide the same kind of hearing. I know that that's not parkland, but it is publicly owned city land that's involved that we're having here. We need to have that discussion and then have the president and first lady make up their own minds and hear all of the discussion and not just from the South Side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Young lady.
Good evening. My name is Prinsella Jerebu Lee and I am a lifelong Chicagoan and a Washington Park homeowner. I am here on behalf of the Coalition to Revitalize Diet High School. The coalition is comprised of such incredible stakeholders as the DeSable Museum of Black History, Chicago Botanic Gardens, Chicago Teachers Union, UIC, Department of Education, just to name a few. We are not opposed to the Obama Library in the city of Chicago or on the South Side of Chicago. However, we are against the last open enrollment neighborhood high school, Diet High School being collateral damage for the library. The promise of education has been broken in our community and in our city. And as a result, we developed a visionary plan for the school and for the community surrounding it. We want the Diet Global Leadership and Green Technology High School Plan implemented as a part of the proposal for the library. The library would be amazing on the South Side of Chicago, especially since we have over 160 neighborhood schools that do not have a library. But we wanna make sure that we have the Diet Global Leadership and Green Technology Plan implemented at Diet High School in Washington Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, prior to your coming up, would you please announce the next speakers?
Robin Clark, William Robinson, Melvin Butler, London Dixon.
Mr. Dixon went.
Last name is spelled S-K-O-S-E-Y. And our final speaker of the night, Don Hall.
Mr. Scossey spoke already.
Sir, sir.
Please come down. If, if your name has not been called, but you have turned in a card, please come down and get in the line. We are coming to the end of the cards that we have, but if you wish to testify, we will hear your testimony. Sir, please, you may begin.
Good afternoon, evening. Uh, my name is Barry Rappaport. I grew up in Jeffrey Manor and South Shore. I, uh, played in, uh, Ben, uh, Bensley Park as well as Jackson Park and, um, I, I'm a retired Chicago Public School teacher. During my, uh, last year of teaching on the South Side, my South Side students, uh, ran a student, teacher, and community collaborative project. And I believe we left a, a boulder, and I, I don't believe it, I know we left a boulder in Jackson Park celebrating Frederick Douglass for his activities there. And I believe that this project brought together, I know that, I know that the project brought together the park district, Mayor Richard M. Daley, and, uh, students, teachers, and community members, you know, ended up getting a boulder, uh, a, a bronze boulder with.
One minute remaining.
Excuse me, a granite boulder with a bronze plaque, um, dedicated to Frederick Douglass for, uh, uh, who dedicated the Haitian Pavilion. Um, the boulder is located by the Bowling Green and the 59th Street Harbor. Please, uh, look for it if you haven't seen it yet. Um, I would, my feeling is that what these students did with teachers and community members is they.
Thirty seconds remaining.
They got the, the park district, they got the, uh, the board, the president of the Board of Education, and they got, uh, the community to support a boulder placed in a park. And what this means, I think, uh, is, this is, I believe, a precedent, a precedent, um, that the land, uh, can be used. All you have to do is really, um, follow the lead of these South Side students.
Obama Presidential Library to the South Side of Chicago. The SECCE, established in 1952, is comprised of leaders representing the Hyde Park, Kenwood, Oakland, Washington Park, and Woodlawn Communities. These five communities make up the neighborhood service area of the SECCE. We believe that our established record of community service and work in these areas align with the overall goals of the university in its bid for the Obama Presidential Library. The library would bring great resources and serve as a catalyst for extensive economic workforce development, educational improvement, increased cultural opportunities, and tourism for the communities within our neighborhood that would benefit greatly from such a great investment. First Lady Michelle Obama's commitment to the work of the commission was demonstrated in. You done? In her service as our board treasurer for several years. Thus, the commission is pleased to have the opportunity to serve the first family in the neighborhood in which they live, worked, and played.
One minute remaining.
We wholeheartedly pledge our support to bring the Obama Presidential Library home to the South Side of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. You may start. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. My name is Robin Kaufman. I graduated from the university 50 years ago. I live six blocks from Washington Park. I spend a lot of time there. Uh, I am distressed at how the university has misrepresented things and we just had an example of it. They, what Ms. Williams, uh, said was, we want it on the South Side. Most people agree, we want it on the South Side. That doesn't mean we have to use precious historic parkland to do it, either Jackson or Washington Park. Okay. They have engineered, along with the Obama Library Foundation, a quote, "emergency" by hiding their plans to put it in the park and, uh, suddenly bringing it to us. It's, if we want it on the South Side, we have to go with their plan. The people want their plan. The people don't want that plan. I think you've seen that. Okay. Um, so, there is another site, it's got 47 acres, the city already owns it, they've already put almost a million dollars into a study of how they would do the transportation and everything else. That's the Michael Reese site, um, and.
One minute remaining.
The library could come to the South Side and it could go there. Why hasn't that happened? You can guess. However, what we know is that the mayor desperately wants to put a casino there. Now, do we want a casino there or do we want the library there? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Mr. Radler.
Good evening.
You can turn it up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ernest Coach Ratcliffe. I'm, uh, representing the coaches of the city of Chicago. I spent many, many years out here on, at Jackson Park servicing the youth with all, all these fields and things of that nature. We've developed and sent thousands and thousands of kids to high school and college. I have one question and I just wanna know, and I know you might not be able to answer it, but I want to be a part of this answer and the coaches wanna be represented. If the library comes here and those ballparks are moved, where will our children be able to go and participate in youth empowerment sports? This is a safe haven. I work tremendously hard with the 71st Street District up here and the University of Chicago to make sure that it's safe for our families and kids to come over here and play. It's a home for all of our kids here. So, if it is, the Presidential Library is a great monument, but if it comes here, please do not forget those kids that use that facility to play their games.
One minute remaining.
To be safe and to call it home. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a valid point. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is William Robinson. I grew up in Bronzeville on 43rd. My roots go back to the beginning, when it first started, black people first started coming up here. Uh, thank God for Friends of the Park, cause we need somebody to stand up for these parks. We, the parks, there was a language in the park, I was talking with a friend of mine and he said, "But how can they do that?" Because there's no language in the parks that the parks are to remain forever free. Forever free. We already got a toy factory, uh, museum, a Lucas Museum, that's for Star Wars. Then we could tear down Humble Park for Star Trek. We could put something else, I mean, the parks are prepared for free. They're not for toy museums, they're not for casinos, they're not for you to knock down people who lived here for 50 years, from their mother to their grandfather to their son's building, for you to send a note through certified mail saying, "Intimate domain, we need your lifelong home for a parking lot extension." There's plenty of land. You want it, you want it on the South Side? Here's, here's 55th and King Drive. Cross the street, you're still on 55th and King Drive. That's all you gotta do is cross the street. But what you want is the land, but you can't have it. I mean, you're trying to sell your soul for some money. You're selling the parkland. He said, one guy earlier said, "You can always build and plant another tree." Where? Where? And, and, and any of these politicians?
Thirty seconds remaining.
We vote you out. You're gonna lose those cushy jobs that you show up a couple hours a, a month to work and get a hundred grand, we're gonna vote you out. We all registered voters, we vote with your ass off, you gots to go. We don't need it, we don't wanna sell our souls for the park. The park is to remain forever free. We don't need a Lucas Museum, we don't need anything. We need what God gave us, green grass, plenty of open space. I don't wanna be stacked on top of everybody doing a, a picnic or whatever, okay? There's plenty of vacant land throughout the city of Chicago. You tore down the whole projects for a land grab. But the real estate market fell off.
You have exceeded two minutes.
So, you lost the state street corridor to downtown.
Your time is up, sir.
All right. My time is up. I made my point. We ain't selling our soul for no casino.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Baker. I'm very involved with the Chicago Teachers Union, with COCO, with N-Cobra, and I'm a retired teacher. I wanna say that I'm a lifetime member of this community and the parks are very important. The question is, I'd like for the panels to notice, how many people here want to have the Obama Library in Chicago? Raise your hand. Take a note, take a note. So, the main question that I'm hearing is, what land are you gonna put it on? So, we have to be careful that we don't ignore land that's being used for recreation because our children need recreation. I asked my mother before I left home, she's 94 years old, "What should I say, mama?" She said, "Tell them we want the Obama Library in Chicago on the South Side." The library would allow us more economical growth. As an educator, I realize libraries are essential. We wanna improve the economical well-being of citizens in the community. We have some hard questions, panel, that's been raised tonight. I hope you are listening because we need to have the community's input.
One minute remaining.
The input should tell if you want that land to be changed and a building laid on it. The input should be if you want that land, that library to be in another spot. So, I say to you, let's have the library right here in Chicago, but let's make sure we resolve all these questions. So, this will be a community, a unity effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Naomi Davis, uh, the founder and CEO of Blacks in Green, a proud granddaughter of Mississippi sharecroppers, raised to be a steward of the land. And I live right across from the park. I'm in there every day with my dog Lena Horn, with poop bags, okay? And, and, uh, open, unfettered space is precious to us. The soil, the grass, the trees, they have therapy. Any of you who have ever stretched yourself out on the ground, any of you who are outdoors people know that you can go there and get well. It's a fact. Here's a. Here's another fact. The parkland is not necessary for the Obama Presidential Library on the South or the West Side of Chicago. Matter of fact, I'm still befuddled as to why the universities, if they, if they're on the shortlist, they didn't get together, the University of Illinois and the University of Chicago, and build on the Michael
One minute remaining.
and build on the Michael Reese Site. But we are, uh, we're, we're chip-chip-chipping and slipping away at a slippery slope. The next two or three great ideas that are needed in the parkland will continue to erode our ability to get well with the land. So, we, um, so we're working at the intersection of environment and economy and
Thirty seconds remaining.
Development is an economic cornerstone for us, but we strongly oppose the opportunity that's going to exist for displacement through gentrification. We have an extreme wealth disparity in America. Blacks cannot compete with white dollars for control of the land. We believe ownership of the land, ownership of the businesses, and the capital necessary to sustain them are absolutely essential. Community benefits are not declared. They are negotiated, and we believe that
You have exceeded two minutes.
We should
Please conclude.
I will. We should be looking at models across the country. Harlem was once 90% black. Now, it's 30% black. And we should be looking at the Columbia, Johns Hopkins, and MIT models for how you can put money on the table first, put protections there first, and then talk with the community.
Thank you very much. Can I ask that some of you come to the other microphone? You can stay there, but since you're, please. You may start.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Robin Boyd Clark, and I'm a candidate for Fifth Ward Alderman. But I am also a longtime resident of South Shore, a longtime community activist and community builder. And I'm also a person who owns a piece of history in reference to the president, because he had his first campaign and legislative office in a building that I own. The community can speak for themselves. We are intelligent people. I'm trying to understand why is it that the university doesn't support things that the community wants? They try to tell the community what they should have. And so, any efforts that we have made to do a landmark there was denied by the local politician. It was cut off, cutting the community off from matching funds of state funds and federal dollars. And so, I'm supportive of the Obama Library. I'm not so sure that it needs to be in park district property, okay? I'm trying to understand why, why, why we can't get something south of 63rd Street. We have this huge place.
One minute remaining.
We have this huge place called Lakeside Development. Why can't they look at that site? I mean, that, that's an opportunity, that's an option, because we hear about options, right? And I'm just saying that the community organizing first African-American president would likely not support using parkland. And he would support community initiatives.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And he would encourage the University of Chicago to execute a community benefits agreement and support people in the community and not act like people, I'm just gonna say, black people and people in surrounding communities don't know how to conduct themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Holly Schisler.
Can you raise your microphone a little bit?
I can. I can try. Is that better?
That is better, thank you.
Yes. So, my name is Holly Schisler. I'll try to be brief. I've lived in Chicago and on the South Side for the last 15 years, and most recently, the last six years in South Shore, where I'm also raising my young child. I agree with everybody who has spoken in saying that for historical, symbolic, and economic reasons, it's vitally important, crucially important, that the Obama Library come to Chicago and, I hope, to the South Side. But I think that putting it to us as a choice between public parkland and the library, either the library or the parkland, is a false choice and a choice that is difficult to understand why it's being put to us in such a way. And the, many speakers have already said there's a, there's a tremendous amount of vacant land on the South Side available to be developed if the people responsible
One minute remaining.
for this kind of development would put their minds to it. Finally, I'd like to say, I'm a person who has walked nearly every day of the 15 years I've lived here, either in Washington Park or in Jackson Park, depending on the different locations where I have lived. I value that space. It's not only public land, it's green space. When we talk about a legacy, one of the legacies that we need to leave to future generations is open land to recreate, open land for our children to play on.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And also, by the way, green space, grass and trees to produce oxygen so that we can continue to breathe and shade so that the city will not be so hot in the summer. Once this land is gone, it won't be replaced.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Madam Chair. My name is Mark Lovelace, and I'm a candidate for Chicago City Clerk. And I, and more than that, as I know most of you members of the committee from various forms of life, I'm a recipient of recognition of calls to public service from President Obama. And as someone who's served on various community boards, I don't envy your decision that you have to make not one, not one bit. You, as the park district, your primary objective is to maintain the public parks. And I know that you have taken this, and the fact that you've had, you're scheduling these two meetings, shows that you really have a real sensitivity as far as to fulfilling that mission. Now, I believe in having a park, having the library here. And I believe in maintaining the public parks as they are. I think there'd have to be some extraordinary circumstances for the parks to be traded off
One minute remaining.
as a, as anything other than open space. And I've been to the planning committee meetings of many of the groups that were planning proposals. And I made this point there, and I'll make it here. If it's towards, and if it's towards an objective of trying to have a social impact, in other words, not just the traditional business model,
Thirty seconds remaining.
but a social, a social entrepreneurial impact, so that it's not just about profits and dollars and things, but having real community effectiveness and not just providing a job for, even if it's 1,200 people, but having an impact that will, not just through the jobs, but through a concentrated effort, improve the sustainability and the development of the entire community. And I hope that in your deliberations that you would take that into consideration, that to not just stick with the traditional mindset of business and production, but have a, an objective of having a broader
Please make your final remarks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Sharon Payne. I'm a community activist with Stop and MTO. I'm here to say that I love the idea of this library. I'm thrilled. But we, I'm, I'm not thrilled when it comes to taking back my trees, okay? I've used, I've used this, uh, this, this land out here for myself as a child, for my children, for my grandchildren, and I hope to see it still be here and be public, okay? Now, we've got plenty of land that's been razed, and nobody is using it. How come we can't use this for the library, okay? University of Chicago often refers to itself as the 800-pound gorilla. Hey, they're more like the 8,000-ton gorilla when it comes to this community, because they run it. And we need to stop letting them run it. We need to run our own communities. We need to get up off our behinds and vote, okay? I love the idea of the library, but guess what? We need a trauma center. And you could do all of this for the library. You could do some more for a trauma center for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to say thank you for allowing us to have this time to voice our opinions on what it is that we want for the South Side of Chicago. It's not often that we're given a platform to actually speak and give our concerns so that they can be considered seriously. However, I'm terribly embarrassed tonight, because we'll never have another first black president from Chicago. And whereas this conversation should have been about how we should be coming together to unite, to bring a library to the city of Chicago to honor our first black president, who is from this city and whose wife went to school in the 7th Ward, and I'm not gonna mention what ward I'm running for office for, because it's not about that tonight. It's not about political agendas and who can do what to advance their political careers. And I'm extremely embarrassed that we've used this platform in this time to talk about what we can do, and we cannot even celebrate what he's done. So, I'm embarrassed for all of you all who came in here with your personal agendas and came in here to talk about anything other than the Obama Library this evening.
One minute remaining.
But then I have to remember that 60% of the people who voted in my office were Caucasian and of other races. So, let me remind you people that we may never, ever again have this opportunity, and that he is from Chicago, and this is the very reason right now why he wants to relocate it somewhere else. And there aren't very many businesses that want to invest in Chirac, in the city of Chicago, and that want to bring development and growth into this community.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Now, I want to see the checkbooks of everyone else who brought money to the table that can actually cover this project and cover $600 million in growth and economic development.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Commissioner Lavelle, Commissioner King, Superintendent Kelly. My name is Graham Brady. I am a private citizen of Chicago. I was born at Providence Hospital. I was raised on the South Side of Chicago, and I live on the South Side of Chicago now. I have had the good fortune of knowing President Obama and working with First Lady Michelle Obama at City Hall. The benefits of the Obama Presidential Library are enormous, and they don't need to be repeated now. But that's not what we're here about. What we're here about is the proper location of this phenomenal institution. The architect grayed out, on the PowerPoint slide, the right spot. And that right spot is the 11-acre site outside of the parks. The right place for this museum is not in the parks. I suggest that the University of Chicago take that 11-acre site, donate it to the parks, name it for Michelle Obama, the First Lady, because she is Barack's rock, and build the library there. The discussion tonight is about the right place for the park. It should be on new parkland,
One minute remaining.
expanded parkland, and not in existing parkland. Locating the library further into the community would be an enhancement for the community. It would make it more accessible, and it would leave the green space that we have for the public. The name of Barack Obama should join the pantheon of great names in our parks. Adler, Cheff, Field, Dusaboe, Notabart, Dusaboe, et cetera. But we don't need to take that parkland. We need to preserve that parkland for future generations forever. We need the library here. We don't want to lose it to New York, or Hawaii, or, as the Republicans are saying, to Kenya. But we need to have it in Chicago outside of the park. Please consider your decision seriously. Bring the Obama Library to Chicago, but don't take our precious parkland. The parks are for the public. The library can be elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Thank you very much. My name is Celia Leventhal, and I have lived on the South, I've lived on the South Side for 25 years. I would, I am a great fan of the parks. I grew up in Mississippi and made my own migration to Chicago 35 years ago. And the salvation from moving from wide-open spaces to a very dense city was open space. It was parks and trees and grass that were available to people who lived in multifamily buildings, high-rises, et cetera. That's one of the joys of Chicago that other urban areas don't have. The idea of shrinking our parks, and I know that many people don't feel this is a shrink, this is shrinking the parks, but anytime you take the green space out, you'd never recover it. I would like to see the library expand our park system by becoming part of its own park.
One minute remaining.
I mean, it could be near another park. It will bring thing, I've been to other presidential libraries, and I've seen the things that are brought with that kind of thing and the things that are taken away. I would support, either the West Side or the South Side, additional beautiful things are needed in many places, both of those areas. But I strongly oppose putting it in one of our existing parks. I would also like to say
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, thank you. I would also like to say that on my way in, I met up with this gentleman here, who's in the wheelchair, who came to this meeting by train and by bus, because he's a public-spirited person and is very invested in this. I ran into him at the corner, the south corner, and he was sliding all over the place in his wheelchair trying to get to this meeting. And so, he, he allowed me to help him get here by steering him and making sure he got over 3/4 of a block of unshovelled and unswept sidewalk. And in a way, I feel that, that that's a bit sadly symbolic of all these big plans. What happens in the grand plans for the city and for huge swat, well, I'm, I'm not sure who benefits from this. It costs a lot of money to go into a presidential library. But at any rate, I think it, to lose sight of the fact that we have people who are disabled that want to come to public, that have to, have to struggle with ice and snow to come to this gigantic public meeting where there are 15 buses full of people coming, that's a detail that's very important. And I think it's symbolic of many things.
You're right.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I really, thank you very much.
That's an important consideration. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greetings. My name is Bahad Atiyah Potep. And I'm going to be very brief. And I just wanted to say that it seems like whenever something major, some major plans are being developed for, say, since the daily administration, when they were planning on bringing the Olympics here, they had their sights on Washington Park. And that was going to displace a lot of people, and it created the same amount of controversy and upheaval that it's creating right now. But I'm just saying that everything is vibration. Everything is energy. And just because we don't know what that land is, the University of Chicago definitely knows, because they have the equipment. They know the vibration, the energy of the land. I don't know. But there's something about that land that they've been trying to get for a very long time. And we have to dig our heels in and fight, because it has to do with us. It has to do with us. So, I don't know, but we can't, we can't let this go. We can't let this go.
Thank you very much. We are two minutes before nine. You have our last two minutes.
Thank you so much.[1714.85]
Thank you so much. My name is Adorthis McDowell. I'm with the Kenwood Oakland Community Organization and the Coalition to Revitalize Diet High School. Let's talk about Diet High School. Diet High School was disinvested by the City of Chicago, was disinvested by the current mayor, was disinvested by the Chicago Public Schools. We are not opposed to Diet High School or to... We're not opposed to the Presidential Library coming into Washington Park. Okay? We're not opposed to using the parkland. However, the University of Chicago will work with the Coalition to develop the amenities as talked about by the Metropolitan Tennis Council that will go into place toward making that park usable for the entire community. Let's look at the history of Bronzeville. Okay? Walter H. Diet was a jazz musician. Elementary school that set the stage for many, many jazz teachers, many music teachers that created music programs throughout the South Side of the City of Chicago, including Hyde Park, including King High School, which went to the inauguration. A lot of that genesis came from Walter H. Diet High School. If you look at the history of Bronzeville, Diet belongs in Bronzeville. Bronzeville belongs in the conversation seriously for the Barack Obama Presidential Library. However, we must have a dialogue with the community. We cannot take away the community's voice from a fair say and a fair shake for Bronzeville, for the Presidential Library...
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay? For the history of our ancestors that have come to Chicago over these past 150 years. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.[1743.88][1743.88](applause) We have heard a wide range of views tonight. There is another public hearing tomorrow, beginning at 12 noon in the Washington Park Field House. I thank you all for coming. I remind you that this has been a public hearing. It is not a meeting of the Chicago Park District Board. There is no decision that will be made based on the testimony that we heard today. Thank you all for coming, and good night.[1769.06][1769.06](applause)[1770.06][1770.06](end of transcript)